Ladies and gentlemen, please take your seats. We're going to begin our meeting. And just to let you know, the way we handled the beginning of the meeting, we'll have an invocation, although I'm giving it today because my invoker, like many of us, got stuck in traffic and isn't here. And then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we have a vote on items that have not been held. And then we go into presentations. And because we have so many wonderful guests here today, we're going to begin those presentations with those who were the chosen, as it were, for our bookmark contest. And we'll go in order, in this order, the third and then the fifth, then the first, the second, and the fourth. So, welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting. Today, Tuesday, March 6th. We take note that Supervisor Barker is excused from school this morning. So we will have an 80% compliment when Supervisor Ridley Thomas gets off the elevator. And we're thankful for the presence of our Chief Executive Officer, our County Council, our Executive Officer, our Sergeant-at-Arms, all here to assist you. So we'll begin with an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So those who are able, please rise for the invocation. Dearest Lord, we thank you most for this amazing day, for the leaping green leaf spirits of trees, for a true blue dream of sky, and for everything which is natural, which is infinite, which is yes. We pray that you will bless the work of this Board, all those who work with this Board, putting in so many, many hours to serve the public. We pray that you will help their hearts to stay whole and happy, and their minds to stay sharp. We pray that you will bless all of those who come to speak to the Board today, all of those who come to be honored by the Board today. But most of all, we thank you, Lord, for all the blessings you have given us, for the opportunities, for the joys, for the friendships, for our families, for our friends. We pray that you will help us to do good work, keeping in mind all those whom we serve. We pray that you will bless those who are unable to help themselves today, those who are without a home, those who are not in good health, those who are suffering through mental illness, those who are taking care of others, all of those who are impoverished and in need. And we pray in your name that you will bless us all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Does Supervisor Ridley Thomas's staff have the certificate for our pledge leader? I'll be happy to present it, if I may. Thank you. Mr. Williams, please join me here. Let me give you the certificate. Mr. Willie Williams served in the United States Army from 1979 to 1982 and attained the rank of Private First Class. His last unit of assignment was 101st Airborne Division. Mr. Williams is the recipient of the Army Service Ribbon, the Overseas Service Ribbon, and the Good Conduct Medal. He's currently employed as a plant worker for the Compton Unified School District. Mr. Williams has been a resident of the 2nd District for many years with his wife Mary Ann, his daughter Tiara, and two granddaughters, Tranice and Trinity. So please help me thank Mr. Williams for his service to our country and our community and for leading us in today's Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Executive Officer, please call the agenda.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Today's agenda will begin with the sent matter that will be taken up at 11:00 a.m. as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On item S1 is a discussion on the launch of the "Everyone In" campaign to support and participate in countywide effort to end homelessness. This item is related to item 9. Members of the public will be called one time to address the Board on both of these items. On page 3, Special District Agendas. This is the agenda for the meeting of the Community Development Commission. On item 1D, members of the public have requested that this item be held. On page 4, this is the agenda for the meeting of the Regional Park and Open Space District. On item 1P, a member of the public has requested that this item be held. On item 3P, this is an addition as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On page 5, Consent Calendar, Board of Supervisors, items 1 through 13. On items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, a member of the public has requested that these items be held. On item 7, Supervisor Ridley Thomas and members of the public request that this item be held. On item 9, this item will be held with S1. On item 10 and 11, a member of the public has requested that this item be held. On item 13, members of the public have requested that this item be held. On page 11, Administrative Matters, items 14 through 43. On item 14, members of the public have requested that this item be held. On items 16 and 17, members of the public have requested that these items be held. On item 18, Supervisor Solis and members of the public has requested that this item be held. On item 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25, a member of the public has requested that these items be held. On item 27, a member of the public has requested that this item be held. On item 32, a member of the public has requested that this item be held. On item 33, Supervisor Kuehl and a member of the public request that this item be held. On item 41A, a member of the public has requested that this item be held. On page 23, this includes miscellaneous additions to the agenda which were posted more than 72 hours in advance of the meeting as indicated on the supplemental agenda. The remaining items through 41A are before you.
Thank you. Those remaining items are moved by Supervisor Han, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Without objection, they are approved.
On page 25, Notices of Closed Session. On CS2, the Chief Executive Officer requests that this item be continued one week to March 13, 2018, as indicated on the supplemental agenda. On page 27, Items Continued from Previous Meetings for Further Discussion and Actions by the Board. Supervisor Kuehl requests that this item, A2, be taken up in closed session as item CS3. These items are before you.
Moved by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Han. Without objection, they are approved.
That completes the reading of the agenda. Board of Supervisors' presentations begin with the Chair's presentations.
Thank you very much. We're going to start today with honoring those who were chosen as the finest artists designing bookmarks for our libraries, beginning with the 3rd District. And then we'll come to 5th District, because I promised Catherine I would help honor her winners, then the 1st, the 2nd, and the 4th. Well, this is a wonderful, wonderful occasion for us. We do it every year. And I learned from our head librarian, Sky Patrick, this morning that we've been doing it for 38 years, which, as she pointed out, was five times as old as many of the winners. So welcome, everybody, to the 38th Annual Bookmark Contest Recognition Event. This annual bookmark celebration is to showcase the achievements of students who have demonstrated both a love of reading and a really fine artistic talent. The theme for this year's contest is "What's Your Story?", or maybe "What's Your Story?", or maybe "What? Your Story?". There was a lot of different ways of looking at it, as we'll see when you see all of their different bookmarks, which we do make available in our libraries, in our district offices, and all around the county after today. Many of these stories depict great hopes and dreams about the future. These young people are our future civil engineers, police officers, professional gymnasts, and journalists, and many other amazing goals that they expressed. And I firmly believe that every student in this room is capable of achieving their goals and maybe even dreaming bigger as they go along. To the students in the room, I want you to know that the first chapters in your lives are already off to a really great start. I hope that you'll continue visiting the library and read, read, read. Sky Patrick, did you want to say something before we started making the awards? You don't have to. All right? I want to give you the opportunity, our amazing, give a big hand to our amazing Chief Librarian, Sky Patrick.[746.88][746.88](Applause). So please join me in recognizing this year's winners from the 3rd District. The winner in the 9th through 12th grade section, Daria Shavatek. Shavatek? Say it for me.
Shavatek.
Shavatek. Thank you. Her guests include her family, her parents, Konstantin Shavatek, and her mother, Inga Bogomolny. Bogomolny. Did I get close? Thank you so much. Asked her favorite hobby, she said she doesn't have only one thing she likes to do, but prefers to draw and read and sometimes write short stories. At school, she participates in the Animal Rights Club, which is really a very good thing, protection of anybody or thing or entity that needs our protection, where they discuss different issues that involve animals and they plan programs that could help our shelters and volunteer at shelters as well. When asked what her favorite subject was, she said she doesn't have a favorite. All of them are pretty interesting, she said. But many times she enjoys English, geometry, and maybe Spanish. I really understand. I didn't excel, but I sort of can speak. Right now, she says her goal when she grows up is to become a journalist. At the moment, what she's reading is a novel called "The Hero of Our Time" by Mikhail And all-time favorite story or book, she says, once in 4th grade, her friend recommended that she read a book series called Warriors, which really impressed her and for now is the first name that appears in my mind after the question about my favorite book. Sometime ago, she also read "The Street Cat Named Bob and How He Saved My Life" by James Bowen and "The Book Thief" by Marcus Zuzak, which also impressed her. So please help me welcome and thank the winner for our 9th through 12th grade, Daria Shavatek.[886.12][886.12](Applause). Our winner for 6th grade through 8th grade, Maria Bautista, attends Valor Academy Middle School, and her guests include her parents, Juana Vazquez and Gaudeno Baptista. Her favorite hobby is singing. That's a good hobby. Could also make a good, pretty penny off of that. And the activities she's involved in in school are choir, basketball, and SRLA, which stands for Students Run LA, a program where students from different schools run in marathons. I see a Rhodes Scholar in the making here, actually. They're in marathons almost every month, and to get ready for the final 26.4 miles that they'll be running in LA on March 18th, hopefully, she says, is the second time she's going to run the marathon. Her favorite subjects, math and history. What she wants to be, she dreams of becoming a fashion designer or a doctor. I recommend both. I think that what doctors wear is really boring.[952.63][952.63](Laughter). You could probably combine those things. She's currently reading "The Diary of a Young Girl" by Anne Frank. How many of you have read Anne Frank's diary? Nobody in the audience? Okay, better. And all-time favorite story or book is "Coraline" by Neil Gaiman and "Heidi" by Johannes Sperry. Please help me thank and welcome Maria Bautista, our winner 6th through 8th grade. Our winner 3rd through 5th grade, Abigail Han. Hi, Abigail. Her guests are her family, Frank and Mindy Han, her parents, Anne, Mi Huo, her grandmother. Her favorite hobby, writing and drawing. Other activities, art, soccer, swimming, piano, cooking, dancing in a variety show, and Chinese school. Clearly an underachiever. I can see that already. Favorite class or subject, writing. Dream of when you grow up? Not sure yet. Excellent. Keep it open, because so much happens to you as you go along and you say, "Oh, I never even knew that could be a job." That's what I said about this.[1028.41][1028.41](Laughter). Currently reading "Paint the Wind" by Pam Munoz Ryan. All-time favorite story or book, "The Lunar Chronicles" series by Marissa Meyer. Abigail, this is a quote, "is a reading fiend." She loves to read. She's reading "The Unwanted" series by Lisa McMahon, biography about Abigail Adams, and Mockingjay. Hunger Games fans out there, good. She loves writing short stories and drawing and really looking forward to moving on to middle school next year. A first, someone looking forward to middle school. Congratulations to Abigail. Please give her a big hand.[1067.01][1067.01](Applause). Our winner in kindergarten through 2nd grade, attends St. Matthew's Parish School. Her name is Asia Padmanathan. Her guests include her family, her parents, Rena Yasuda and Han Padmanathan. Her favorite hobby, gymnastics. All right, you go, girl. Other activities, rock climbing, basketball, Chinese class, and piano. All right. Favorite subject in school, art. Dream of when you grow up? Professional gymnast. Excellent goal. What are you currently reading? Ivy and Bean series by Annie Barrows. All-time favorite story or book? Charlotte's Web by E.V. White. Please help me to thank Asia, our winner, kindergarten through 2nd grade. Congratulations.[1122.42][1122.42](Applause). We'll take a picture together for our district? Okay, that's all right. No, I think we back further. Tower over each other. Thank you. Supervisor Barker is very proud of you and apologizes that she can't be here today and asked if we would honor you anyway. Of course. Our winner, kindergarten through 2nd grade, attends La Canyada Flint Ridge Elementary School, kindergarten. Her name is Isabella McArthur. Here she is, Isabella. Sweet. Her guests include her family, her parents and family, John McArthur and Fay McArthur, Jackie McArthur, Jean Jean Gao, I said that completely wrong, and Yu Hua Hui. And I apologize, but I'll brush up. But her family is in the house. Her favorite hobby, to draw, and are you ready? Play chess. Okay, how many of you play chess in kindergarten? I didn't think so. Me either. Very proud of you. Other activities, taking piano and Chinese classes. Favorite class or subject in school, art class. What does she dream of becoming when she grows up? A pet vet. All right, we have a lot of pets here today. You must have been in seventh heaven. Currently reading Fancy Nancy series by Jane O'Connor. All-time favorite story or book, stories about the Barbie series so far. So please help us thank and honor Isabella.[1244.15][1244.15](Applause). Congratulations. Thank you so much. Okay, let's get back, and I'm going to honor the other winners as well. Thank you. Okay, but we should tell about her, don't you think? Winner 3rd through 5th grade, Carissa Zhang. Carissa Zhang. Or is it Carissa? Carissa Zhang. She attends Emperor Elementary School. Her guests are her family, Roger Zhang, Jennifer Wang, and Lee Wang. Her favorite hobby, drawing and swimming. Other activities, piano, arts, and design. Her favorite class or subject, reading and science. What do you dream of becoming when you grow up? An illustrator, an artist, or an animator? Excellent. We're going to call Disney right today and tell them, "Sign you up." Currently reading Percy Jackson and the Olympians series by Rick Reardon. All-time favorite story or book, Hunger Games, that's two for Hunger Games, all right, by Suzanne Collins. Please help us thank Carissa. Our winner 6th grade through 8th grade, Sequoia Ding.[1325.71][1325.71](Applause). Welcome and congratulations. She attends South Pasadena Middle School, and her guests include her family, Shin Casaner, not the way to pronounce it, I'm sure, Maria Papadopolo, Hu Ding, and Jennifer Lipenmok. Her favorite hobby, loves to sing, act, and participate in musical theater. She's in the right county to do that. Other activities, also enjoys the excitement of math competitions. Good for you. Currently participating in the musical "Hairspray" at her school. "Good morning, Baltimore." All right.[1373.41][1373.41](Laughter). And is working with her Destination Imagination Team to complete this year's Fine Arts Challenge, which includes creating an original eight-minute musical. What is her favorite class or subject? Loves history and science because her teachers have many hands-on activities that she enjoys. Says that history is like a giant fairy tale that never ends. True, and I hope you're the one writing it, as opposed to some of the other people who've been writing history. What do you dream of when you grow up? Thinking about many different jobs that might like in the future, but top three, a Broadway actress, a book author, or a marine biologist? I suggest all of them, kind of in order, really. Currently reading Bamboo People by Metali Perkins and Guitar Notes by Mari Amato. On a mission to finish reading The Secrets of the Immortal Nicholas, is it Flame? Or Flam? Flamel. Excellent. Series by Michael Scott. All-time favorite book? Hmm, hard to pick out a favorite, she says, but some of them include The Land of Story series by Chris Colfer, The Maximum Ride series by James Patterson, and The Mysterious Benedict Society series by Trenton Lee Stewart, as well as many of the Rick Reardon books. Please help me thank Sequoia. There was a winner of 9th through 12th grade in the 5th District, Jean Chen, who could not be here and who goes to West California Academy of Art and Design, so we extend our congratulations to her as well. Over to you, Supervisor Solis.[1480.51][1480.51](Applause).
Thank you so much. Attending the meeting? Okay. For Catherine. Okay. And I'd like to now take this opportunity to introduce the winners of the 1st District. We have Destiny Marquez, Celeste Garcia, Ashley Merlos, and Marina Limon. We'll start with Destiny. Destiny Marquez is a 2nd grader from Saint Resurrection Catholic School. Some of you may recall us mentioning Resurrection Church. That is where the center of our focus is with exile. But she's a survivor. She's going to be a fighter. She's going to help us solve those problems. She's a 2nd grader at Saint Resurrection Catholic School, and her favorite hobby is drawing and making slime as well. Of course, number one is reading. She dances folklorico and belongs to the BFR Ballet Folklorico at her school. When she grows up, she wants to become a private investigator so she can catch bad guys. Maybe she'll even be the first female county sheriff named Destiny. Let's give her a big round of applause.[1578.21][1578.21](Applause). Our next winner for the 3rd through 5th grade category is Celeste Garcia.[1588.58][1588.58](Applause). A 3rd grader from La Merced Elementary School, Celeste loves to draw. She also enjoys dancing and science. When she grows up, she'd like to be an elementary school teacher. Very noble, very noble. Thank you. Give her a big round of applause. Thank you.[1608.71][1608.71](Applause). Next, I'd like to introduce Ashley Merlos. She's the 1st District winner for the 6th through the 8th grade category. Ashley attends the Henry T. Gage Middle School and is in the 7th grade. She loves to draw, and her favorite classes are art and math. Give her a big round of applause. Thank you.[1633.15][1633.15](Applause). And last but not least, Marina Limon, who attends South Omani High School. And she's a winner of the high school category. She's in the 9th grade. She loves to draw and paint. This bookmark that she presented was truly incredible. Marina is still deciding what she wants to be when she grows up, which is okay. I mean, most of us don't really know what we want to be anyway, even though we're grown up.[1666.25][1666.25](Laughter). But she says she's still considering being a police officer. Maybe she'll join the sheriffs, who knows? But again, we want to congratulate all of our winners from the 1st District. We're so proud of them and their family, and also the faculty and staff that came to accompany them this morning. Thank you.[1684.41][1684.41](Applause).
We're delighted today to present the wonderful winners from the 2nd District. Melanie Jimenez, Christina Maria Partida, Jenica Lorente Gore, and Kira Tenzin. Give them a big round of applause, won't you? The first is Melanie Jimenez. Melanie, come forward. Melanie, is Melanie in the house today? She created her bookmark at the Los Angeles County Wiseburn Library located in the city of Hawthorne. She's a 2nd grade student at Juan Cabrillo Elementary School, where her favorite subjects are math and science. She enjoys Minecraft games, where she creates her own words and experiences using building blocks, and attending a Bible class. She is currently reading Titanic by James Cameron and... She is currently reading Titanic by James Cameron, and her all-time favorite book is There Was an Old Lady Who Swallowed Some Leaves by Lucille Colando. And so we want to say to Melanie, thank you for being here. She's joined by her parents, Maria and Ricardo, and her sister Natalie. Big round of applause for Melanie Jimenez. Melanie's having a good time. All right. Our next winner is Kristin Maria Partido. Kristin, Christina, come on up. Christina, thank you. Give her a round of applause. She created... She created her bookmark at Gardena Mamie Deer Library in the city of Gardena. She's a fourth grade student at Amistoy Steam Academy where her favorite subject is science, and she wants to be a civil engineer. Her all-time favorite book is Arf by Spencer Quinn, and she is currently reading Dork Diaries by Rachel Rene Russo. She's joined by her mother Lizette, her grandmother Christina, and her brother Gerardo. Give Christina a big round of applause, won't you? And now, we're going to hear from great Jenica Lorente Gorey. Give Jenica a big round of applause. Hi, Jenica. She is also with us today because she's a sixth grade student at Andrew Carnegie Middle School, and she created her bookmark at the Carson Library located in the city of Carson. She enjoys playing the violin for her school orchestra and playing video games. Her favorite subject in school is art, and she is currently reading Star Girl by Jerry Spinelli. She is joined by her family, her parents, Ruben and Maria, her sisters Janine and Jennifer. Give Jenica a big round of applause with our thanks and congratulations to you. And now, we want to introduce to you Kira Tinstan. Kira, come forward. Thank you. Kira is here. She created her bookmark at the Gardena Mamie Deer Library. She's a 10th grader at San Pedro High School. Her favorite subjects are Spanish and math. She is currently reading The Lost Boys of the Sudan by Mark Bixler, and she enjoys being involved in various ministries at her church, including singing in the choir and dancing on the dance team. She aspires to be her own business owner and that would be in the medical field. She is joined by her family, including her parents Geraldine and Chad, her sisters Kyla and Kennedy, and her aunts Martha and Danielle. Please give them all a big round of applause, and thank you to Kira for being here as the second winner single. Thank you. All right, Madam Chair, I think that concludes. Madam Head Librarian, that concludes my assignment for the day, and with your permission, I will recline to my seat. Thank you.
And last but not least, we will honor the young people in the fourth Supervisory District and their remarkable bookmarks. The first winner I would like to introduce, from the kindergarten through the second grade category, is Yukeku Itami. Give her a big round of applause. Yukeku. She is a first grader at Hickory Elementary School in Torrance. She enjoys drawing, origami, reading, and making original picture books. Her favorite subjects in school are math, science, drawing, English, and Japanese. She is currently reading the Magic Treehouse series. With more than 50 books in that series, she will be visiting the Lomita Library a lot to get through them all. Her favorite book of all is Max and Ruby, because it reminds Yukeku of her relationship with her little brother Akehito. Thank you for sharing your wonderful art with us. I love your bookmark. Congratulations. Give her a big round of applause. Thank you. The fourth district winner of the third through fifth grade category is Nihariya Prabhu. She's standing right next to me. Nihariya is a fourth grader at Cerritos Elementary School, and her favorite hobbies include drawing, ice skating, playing the keyboard, swimming, and art class. Nihariya dreams of becoming a doctor when she grows up. She's currently reading a Minecraft novel. So is my grandson Luke. And her all-time favorite book is El Difoso by C.C. Bell. Keep up the great work and congratulations, Nihariya. Let's give her a round of applause. The winner of the sixth through eighth grade category is sixth grader Teresa Gaetan. One of Teresa's favorite hobbies is playing golf. Come closer, get in the limelight. In fact, she won gold in her last tournament through the LA County Junior Golf Program. Let's give Teresa a big round of applause for that victory. She's also become interested in filmmaking after participating in the El Camino Real Library Mobile Film Classroom. Is there anything our libraries can't do, Sky? That's amazing. Teresa hopes to become a filmmaker or a professional artist when she grows up. She's currently reading A Wrinkle in Time, but her all-time favorite book is Island of the Blue Dolphins. You're a true artist. I love your bookmark. It's absolutely beautiful and never stop following your dreams. Congratulations, Teresa. Give Teresa a round of applause. And the last winner today of the ninth through the 12th grade category is Miranda Mohica. Miranda is in the 12th grade at Los Altos High School in Hacienda Heights. The classes she enjoys most in school are psychology and art. With graduation right around the corner, Miranda hopes to study to become an ultrasound technician. She's currently reading A Child Called It by David Pelzer, but her all-time favorite book is Divergent by Veronica Roth. Thank you for being here today. Congratulations on your beautiful artwork as well. And congratulations to all these winners. You know, our library department, along with the county, reproduces all of these winning bookmarks by the hundreds. And I know I spent all last year handing out these bookmarks wherever I went, so your art and your talent will go way beyond today to hopefully many children around LA County who will be inspired by what you've done here today. Congratulations. It is important. See, I thought she was shy, but I pronounced her name wrong. Come right here and let's get this name correct. It's Yu... Yukako? Yukako. Okay. Give her a big round of applause. Sorry.
Yukako. Yukako.
Way to go, way to go. One of my favorite things.
I love your hat. It's so cool.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call up Rita Robinson and I believe John Wicker from the Departments of Parks and Rec. Rita, thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. Oh, my goodness. Rita Robinson. Rita Robinson is leaving public service after more than 40 years serving here with the county. Prior to coming to Los Angeles County, she spent 33 years in the city of Los Angeles. Wow. Once she made the move over to the county, Rita served five years with the Chief Executive Office for almost three years with the Department of Parks and Recreation. During her years with Parks and Recreation, Rita helped us lead the county-wide Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. This was truly an unprecedented effort to document existing parks and recreation facilities in the 88 cities and in unincorporated areas. The Park Needs Assessment set the course, or the tone, for healthy, safe communities to have thriving parks that contribute to our public health and well-being, also helping to create a sense of space and increase community cohesion, improve the environment, and also boost the economy. Rita's skills, talents, and knowledge helped bring forth Measure A, that passed overwhelmingly by the voters of Los Angeles. Yes, thank you so much. Thereby facilitating a focused priority and funding to our neighborhoods that need parks the most. I commend Rita Robinson for her hard work and dedicated efforts in the 40 years of public service and wish her happiness, health, and success in her retirement. I believe Supervisor Ridley Thomas would like to say something before I ask Rita to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Solis. Colleagues, I'm delighted to stand and say a word about Rita Robinson, who I met a good 20 years ago when she was in the employ of the City of Los Angeles and I served on the city council there. Rita distinguished herself as a turnaround artist for several departments: housing, transportation, and more. The list is pretty extensive. When departments fell into difficulty, they reached out to Rita Robinson. And so I just stand today to say thank you for the many, many years of public service that you've offered and the number of departments that you saved, and the benefit that the City of Los Angeles achieved and now the County of Los Angeles as well. She's a special, special person, and Supervisor Solis, thank you for bringing her forward to acknowledge her. And I would seize the opportunity, Rita, to say that this comes from not only me, but your good friend, Avis Ridley Thomas, as well. Thank you. Congratulations, Rita.
Oh, I can only say I'm deeply humbled by the presentation and thank the Board of Supervisors, now and former, that invited me to the county to help with the work that you've done, and I'm just so grateful to God to have had the opportunity. We've worked on such wonderful things from King Hospital to all the other projects that I worked on, to even Little Angels Daycare Center, which I remember distinctly. But I can't thank enough the colleagues of the County of Los Angeles, every department, every phone call I made, county council, everybody was so helpful to me, to teach me, to guide me, and to follow me, even when they didn't know where we were going, to success. And that has been my legacy of time with all of my government work. Every time I look at a parking meter, a left-hand turn signal, I realize the work that I've touched, and recently seeing the documentary on King Hospital, I realize just the fantastic work that each and every person in the county does. And I can tell you have the most wonderful staff, people in the world. I have always loved and honored them, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have come to Parks and to have worked with Russ and John and Norma and the staff on open space and getting money for parks. I hope your continued efforts with Jane Beasley and the Open Space Team, you continue to support them and the great work that they're going to do in the future, along with the Parks Department and everyone, because they are incredible. And I'd just like to thank on behalf of my grandparents, Emma and Finest Craven, my mother, Grace Lambert, and my adoptive parents, Dr. William Thurman and Lena Thurman, their families and how much they have brought me along. Each and every one of you have lifted me, loved me, and taken care of me, and I hope that I have done the same for you. I appreciate my dear friend Deborah Washington for being here with me today, and even though he could not be here, my husband Michael Kane, who made me a better person all around. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I knew Rita in the meeting.
He's a lifesaver.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My final presentation is to help celebrate Consumer Protection Week. And we have the honor of having Brian Steger, Maggie Becerra, Deputy Director, Consumer Protection and Counseling, Sabra Perifoi, Director of Center for Financial Empowerment and the Office of Small Business, Rigo Reyes, Acting Deputy Director, had to leave, but he was here earlier. And we're so proud of our team. Thank you, Brian, for all that you do. Today, we're recognizing the National Consumer Protection Week, which started on March the 4th and ends March 10th. This effort is a part of a coordinated national campaign that encourages consumers across the country to take full advantage of their consumer rights, and makes better informed decisions in the marketplace. These are all helpful tools. The Los Angeles County Department of Consumer and Business Affairs, under the leadership of Brian Steger, is working to ensure that our county residents, all of them, are informed of their consumer rights. When consumers are victimized by fraud, the department works to protect those consumers through counseling, investigation, mediation, and a myriad of other free services available at DCBA. This board fully supports the National Consumer Protection Week, because we know that educated consumers are less likely to be victimized by fraudulent scams. On behalf of my colleagues on the board, I'd like to present the scroll to you in recognition of National Consumer Protection Week. And we would like to encourage all the citizens and residents in the County of Los Angeles to become more educated and help prevent consumer fraud. So with that, I'd like to ask our DCBA Director, Brian Steger, to say a few words. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you Supervisor Solis, and Honorable Board of Supervisors for your support in consumer protection. I appreciate the fact that the board now has proclaimed National Consumer Protection Week throughout the County of Los Angeles for this week. This is the time of year when consumer protection agencies across the country get together to provide consumer education and awareness to those consumer issues, because we know that strong consumer protection is a positive for the economy. Now, we are very excited, because this is going to be the first year that we are actually having a Consumer Resource Fair in Grand Park. It is tomorrow, from 10:00 to 2:00. We're going to have a number of our county partners and agencies out there to provide direct services to consumers. My team will be out there with counselors, and we will be able to take complaints right out there in the park. So please join us tomorrow in Grand Park from 10:00 to 2:00. If you can't join us, you can always call us at 1-800-593-8222. 1-800-593-8222. And before I go, I just want to give a special shout-out to Kimberly Briggs, who's right here. Kim is the one who actually organized our Resource Fair tomorrow. So I want to give her a big round of applause.
Here comes Jaclyn Tilly Hill. Yes. Let's give a big round of applause to Jaclyn. You know, as we celebrate Women's History Month this month, we have a woman with us today that really was a trailblazer here in Los Angeles County. Commissioner Jaclyn Tilly Hill is stepping down from her work with the county after 25 years. Let's give her a round of applause for that. Bravo. She began her commitment to the county in 1993 as only the second woman in county history to become the foreperson of the Los Angeles County Criminal Grand Jury. She then became the first and only woman to lead the county's Citizens Economy and Efficiency Commission. And then she moved on to become the first woman to serve as Chair of the Quality and Productivity Commission, a position she's held for six years. Volunteering to serve on a commission is rewarding work, and Jaclyn is well-known throughout the county family for being willing to put in the time and the effort it takes to advance good ideas. And that's really the very embodiment of all of our county commissioners. She championed the Plain Language Initiative, which brought focus to how important it is to communicate effectively to the public and to each other about county programs and services. She always pushed county departments to find ways to become not only more efficient, but also more service-oriented, celebrating the best innovations with the annual Quality and Productivity Awards, which have become a much coveted prize among county departments. Over the years, she has truly made her mark on this county. In acknowledgement of her great leadership, she was named the First Quality and Productivity Commission Chair Emeritus. Jaclyn is... Yes, let's hear it. Let's give her a round of applause. That means you can never leave once you become Emeritus. Jaclyn is a longtime resident of Long Beach, where she lives with her husband, Randy, who is here with us today. Also joining us is the Director of the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, and former Executive Director of Quality and Productivity Commission, Ruth Wong, the current Chair of the Quality and Productivity Commission, Sean Landris, as well as the previous Chair, Rod Gibson. Thank you, Jaclyn, for being such a trailblazer. Thank you for being an inspiration to women everywhere, and to really shine a spotlight on the fact that being a volunteer really is priceless. Thank you for your time, your energy. Thank you for making Los Angeles County better because of your work. Congratulations, and good luck in your retiring from this particular chapter of your life. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much Supervisor Han. I did have the privilege and the pleasure of supporting your father, as well as I worked as a fellow commissioner with Commissioner Barger, who was Supervisor Catherine Barger's father. The... I do want to thank everyone for this incredible, unbelievable journey that I've been on for the last 25 years. The Board of Supervisors have been a huge, huge supporter. And when you get the support of the people at the top, there just isn't anything you can't accomplish. The executive offices are absolutely unbelievable. The department heads... The department heads in LA County are the finest in the country. My fellow commissioners, unbelievable. Expertise in every field imaginable, and they all bring it to the table to share, to improve and enhance the quality of lives of the residents of LA County. The commission staff, there's not a volunteer alive, a successful volunteer, that hasn't had an unbelievable staff. Ruth Wong is here. She and I were together for nine years, and she is the best of the best. I want to also acknowledge Victoria. Victoria, we go back from the very beginning.
Me too.
25 years ago.
Me too.
Yep. And so we know how incredibly competent her incredible levels of expertise, her devotion to the commission, and just has made everything that I ever wanted to do, the staff has supported and made possible. The Quality and Productivity Managers Network is a one-of-a-kind. We have two representatives of the Quality and Productivity Commission in every department. They are frontline. They're our key communicators, probably the strongest communicators within LA County. They bring us all the projects to fund. They keep us appraised of all of the newest and latest going on in the departments. They make arrangements for all the site visits. They're just an incredible, unbelievably involved, major partner of the Quality and Productivity Commission. My family, my family's unbelievable. I brought my boyfriend to 54 years, right here. We... When we got married, we had a chest in our bedroom that had seven drawers. We quickly filled up that chest with four of those drawers, having four daughters. My father came over one day and said, "You know, you have three drawers left on that chest. Babies, babies, just bring them home, put them in a drawer. They're just... That's the way to go." And my husband, who wanted to pay it forward himself, we were introduced to a gentleman, an anonymous gentleman in LA County, an employee that represented to me the finesse that the county has to offer. A gentleman of impeccable integrity, a commitment and a dedication to enhancing people's lives on a daily basis. He did it day in and day out. This gentleman's name, he's been anonymous all these years, and I want to dedicate my 25 years of service to this gentleman. His name is Howard Scriven Jr., from Los Angeles County Department of Adoptions. We met Howard first in 1976. We called him up again in 1977, and we went back again in 1983. I invite you all here today to open your houses, open your homes, and open your hearts, and think about what you can do to make a difference in this world, and how you can have an influence on an individual's life. Thank you so very much. It's been incredible, unbelievable. I'm so blessed and so grateful for all of the people that I've crossed paths with. God bless each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's have another round of applause for Jaclyn. Thank you for your service. Boy, with Victoria and you stepping down, I think the quality and productivity of that commission is being compromised. Let's take a photo. Vicky and Ruth, you want to come be in this photo?
All right, thank you very much. Our final presentation today, just because Catherine's not here, doesn't mean we're not going to have a pet adoption presentation. Oh, of course you brought me the kitty first. You know I'm a cat person. Come here, Joanie. Okay, this is Joanie. Joanie is a three-month-old domestic short hair from our Downey Animal Care Center. What'd you say? Did you say something in the mic? Okay. Joanie's looking for a forever home, and I think whoever takes her is going to have a fabulous friend. So please call 562-728-4610. And you can give Joanie and many others in her litter, and also her friends at the shelter, a forever home. Hey, Joanie, what do you say?
I think she wants to go with you.
You want to look at the camera? Okay, where's Dazzle? Okay, this is Dazzle. Dazzle's a two-year-old terrier. She is a love. She is also looking for a forever home. She's from the Downey Animal Care Center. Call again. Here's the number, 562-728-4610. You could take Dazzle home and some of her friends. You'd have a wonderful friend. Everybody needs a forever home. So please call 562-728-4610. I know, I love her too. Thank you. All right, Madam Executive Officer, please play the Code of Conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. So we'll begin with the first-held item, in order, that would be Item 7. Turn to Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several items of consequence today. I want to thank those who've come to testify on this, and we'll turn to them shortly. I just want to say, by way of background, it's 1995 that a University of Southern California study provided empirical data to support what many residents knew for years, that the over-concentration of nuisance land uses, liquor stores, et cetera, in their respective neighborhoods were causing dangerous public nuisances and detracting from community wellbeings and community well... and community well-being. And accordingly, in collaboration with other community stakeholders, some of whom are here today, we've been working to reduce the number of such problems in our respective communities to create safer and healthier environments. You may recall that it was in May of last year that we adopted what we call a safe ordinance, and deemed approved policy demonstrates progress and proactive efforts to address the problem. And yet, we're still working on the problems, a lot to be done. I want to commend our county departments for their continued commitment to this issue, regional planning, public health, Sheriff's Department, Public Works, all who collaborate in pursuit of elevating the quality of life of our neighborhoods. Now, more than 20 years after that study, for example, we're experiencing, experiencing a bit of deja vu. Residents through communities throughout our county have voiced their concerns about criminal activity and loitering in and around what is now described by as smoker or tobacco shops, so that in late 2017, a study by UC Riverside provided data that showed high levels of violent and property crimes around these shops. Madam Chair and colleagues, I wish for you to note that I made reference to a USC study in 95 and a UC study in 2017. This is an academic pursuit that we're making here. Thank you very much. No bias, all of the academic institutions are weighing in. We again and always have the responsibility to respond and look at the disproportionate impact on low-income communities or neighborhoods of color in particular. And currently, smoke shops in L.A. County are allowed by right and in commercial zones and do not need a special business license. There's no way to track or monitor them, and we do not know how many there are, let alone how they operate. Not all of them may be problematic, and the crimes and concerns that affect certain community may not touch others. Thus, it seems important that we look deeper into this issue to better understand the prevalence and nuisance of smoke shops. I'd like to hear about the best practices and the regulatory options we have, including possible change to the tobacco retailer license and land use regulations. I'd also like to revise the motion to add that the treasurer and tax collector, and ask that they analyze the TTC's authority and include these shops under Title VII business licenses. I look forward to seeing this report back and explore how we can best respond to the concerns of our communities and see how we can better prevent blight, prevent health disparities, and crime in these respective communities. Madam Chair, there are several persons who have come to testify, and with your permission, I'd ask that they be afforded the opportunity to do so now.
Thank you, Supervisor. Madam Executive Officer, please call those who were asked to speak on this item, or invited.
With the following individuals, please come forward. Andrew Subica from UC Riverside, Alberto Rantan, Community Coalition, Robert Baird, Prevention Institute, John Yee, American Lung Association. Please come forward, and staff will assist you.
Professor, if you would proceed, that would be helpful.
Okay, good morning. My name is Andy Subica. Thank you for bringing this motion, Supervisor Ridley Thomas, and thank you for this opportunity to discuss recent research by my colleagues at LMU and I that supports this motion. So my name is Andy Subica, I'm Assistant Professor of Social Medicine, Population, and Public Health at the UCR School of Medicine. What I want to talk about is in 2015, during a CDC-funded project by the Community Coalition, we were warned by South LA residents that tobacco shops had become dangerous. One, South LA gang interventionists said, "Smoke shops are bad. They're the new liquor stores, that's where gangs hang out now." So to verify these reports, we looked at violent and property crimes in South LA in 2014, and what we found was that for every 100-foot circle in South LA, so that's 100 feet in every direction, there was an average of .5 violent crimes in South LA. In tobacco shops, there was an average of 2.5 violent crimes per 100-foot circle around them, so that's five times greater than the baseline rate of violence in South LA. When we expanded to 200 feet, the community average was two violent crimes. The average on tobacco shops, almost seven. Finally, we ran models to predict violent crime by the number of tobacco shops, liquor stores, and marijuana dispensaries in South LA. Only tobacco shops predicted violent crime. So our research really just states that tobacco shops are potentially serious but unaddressed public health danger to South LA residents, and so it strongly supports this motion to allocate public resources to identifying and assessing the scope of the tobacco shop problem in South LA, and then also identifying the best practices and regulatory policies to address it. And the critical thing is, this has never been looked at anywhere in the U.S. This was the first study that I was able to find, and so there's really no county doing any work to address the tobacco shop issue, and so, you know, very strongly support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Chairperson Kiel, Board of Supervisors. My name is Alberto Retana, I'm the President and CEO of Community Coalition, and we are 100% behind this motion. Thank you Supervisor Ridley Thomas for bringing this forward. It seems like it was only yesterday that you were locking arms with Community Coalition 25 years ago on the issue of liquor stores, and here we are today on another nuisance site. There's a Community Coalition poll mentioned in the motion, which I brought copies for the supervisors, a poll that we were very proud of completing last year but whose results are far from celebratory. For those of you who aren't familiar, last year we took South LA's temperature to assess the concerns of South LA residents 25 years after the civil unrest of 92. We sat with over 4,200 people in 15 zip codes, across six high schools, in hundreds of living rooms, porches and public spaces, in 20- to 30-minute face-to-face conversations. And from person after person after person, we heard very, very disturbing stories and results of how things had gotten worst. And that was hard to hear, for we have fought so hard to create progress since 92, but from the vantage point of the everyday citizen, those waiting to catch the bus, those parents walking their kids to school, those going to work two to three jobs a day, life is hard in 2018. One of those data points, of which there were many, was news to us, the concern for smoke shops. We had expected to hear about liquor stores and marijuana dispensaries, which were also raised, but smoke shops were the top nuisance concern in seven of the 15 zip codes we polled. They were also number one, concern of youth at all high, six high schools where the poll was administered. This motion is a key step in building the right kind of collaboration within the county, collecting the best data and finding the best practices necessary to not only create a built environment that respects the dignity and quality of life of South LA, but to ensure that the goods and services that we deliver are those that speak to our highest aspirations. We look forward to the passage of this motion. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Robert Baird, and I'm an urban planner and project manager at Prevention Institute, a national nonprofit with offices in Limer Park, which seeks to embed health equity in all land use decisions, ensuring that all communities have the conditions to support the health and safety of the people who are there. While the broad effort to decriminalize cannabis has helped to end the worst injustices of the war on drugs, it is also opening a new front for health equity. And without thoughtful regulation and reliable enforcement, the over-concentration of alcohol retail outlets in communities of color a generation ago can easily repeat itself with tobacco shops retailing cannabis. In reality, this process appears to be well underway, and with similar impacts for addiction, public safety, and disinvestment. So we agree then that a crucial first step for the county is to maintain accurate, timely information on where smoke shops are. We also strongly encourage the county to begin drafting a suite of land use regulations that contextualize tobacco and cannabis retail for their surroundings. First, prohibit smoke shops within 1,500 feet of obvious sensitive uses, like schools, parks, and libraries, and do the same for any related signage and advertising. Second, prevent any new smoke shop within a half-mile of an existing outlet. This will prevent the emerging phenomenon of cannabis rows and all cannabis strip malls. And third, require smoke shops to contribute positively to the public domain through storefront transparency, pedestrian-scale lighting, and other environmental design principles that reinforce eyes on the street. We conclude our comments here by soberly pointing out that many local governments across the country are being seduced by the tax revenues from retail cannabis, and there are many dangers here that we urge the county to acknowledge and prevent. When these funds end up augmenting police budgets, they exacerbate mass incarceration, beginning a new tragic chapter in the war on drugs. When these tax revenues are raised in one neighborhood and spent in another, that burdens one for the benefit of another. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A final invited speaker, please.
Sorry. L.A. County Board of Supervisors, my name is John Yee, and I'm the Ad hoc Director for the American Lung Association in California. As the leading patient organization on lung health, I'm glad and proud to be here today to talk specifically in support of the motion by Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas on addressing nuisance around tobacco shops. The motion set forward today is an important one and a timely one. The marketing of our youth, low-income communities, and communities of color by big tobacco is a decades-long practice, and now with the astronomical rise of e-cigarettes and the marketing of flavored tobacco and other harmful tobacco products, this has made our local stores ground zero when it comes to addicting future generations of smokers. Here's some data points collected through the Healthy Stores for a Healthy Community Survey for L.A. County. 77.7% of all tobacco stores are near schools and sell flavored non-cigarette tobacco products. These are cheap, easy to access, and easy to purchase flavored products that are bright packages for students and kids to see. 90.7% of tobacco stores sell mentholated cigarettes, which have been documented for being heavily marketed towards Asian-American youth and the African-American population. And these are just a few of the statistics that are out that show a direct reflection of big tobacco's marketing in our local communities. Of all African-American smokers, nearly 85% smoke menthol, so that's compared to 29% for whites. One out of every five LGBT community member is a smoker. With continued high rates of flavored tobacco and the explosion of e-cigarettes, which seems to evolve every day, our communities are facing a brave new world when it comes to protecting their lung health. We must start somewhere in pushing back these trends. And these stores, where our children walk past to and from school, where we go to get groceries, and for many serve as local community hubs, we should be moving them to become excellent examples of health. And we support this motion, and we look forward to working with you all and making sure it passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks to the invited speakers. Madam Executive Officer, please call those who've signed up to speak from the public.
With the following individuals, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Eric Previn, Chris White, Gilbert Johnson, please come forward.
Thank you, and I appreciate, I appreciate the gesture here to target and monitor tobacco shops, but I must tell you, there are other shops that also, I heard the 100-foot presentation at the very beginning, and, you know, the suggestion that a lot of crime, or more crime happens in that space is true perhaps, but what about gas stations, and certainly 7-Elevens, as we've heard? And, you know, I think that we want to make it fair and reasonable, and we should not be pushing minty ones on children, obviously, in your schools. But, you know, I just, this has a, I think many people have thumped their chest about marijuana becoming legal and trying to do the right thing, and then it gets confusing because great crowds come up on both sides of that, so here's something that seems safe, but let's also be fair and equitable. These are small businesses, and I don't think that anybody is willingly or intentionally, I mean, I don't know, you know, this is a very complicated area, we need to take some action, so I appreciate your looking at it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address you on this issue, and thank you, Supervisor Ridley Thomas, for bringing this motion. I'd like to introduce myself as Chris White. I'm the President of Community Reflections located in Westmont. We offer low-cost and no-cost legal services in the community, as well as I'm a leader with Community Coalition as well. And as, one of the main reasons why I'm involved with Community Coalition is to address the needs of public policy within our community. And having said that, you know, one of the issues that we have taken up is the policy surrounding marijuana dispensaries and smoke shops, among other things. We've did thousands of polls in the community in regards to these, these issues, and I'd be first, first to say that even in my community, not even, there's five of them within a one-mile radius, and, and they attract a different type of element. And not only am I saying a different type of element, I'm talking about criminal element, gang element, you know, and in some areas, some prostitution as well. And I'm not against or opposed to folks having a business, you know, but I am requiring and asking that you hold them accountable for how they conduct their business. And even the, the set-alone smoke shops, where they're just rented maybe from one landlord as opposed to the major ones that's inside of the shopping malls, right? I mean, there's no reason why there should be crime taking place there. Landlords have to be accountable for those who they lease to. You can't lease a crack house to someone and expect not to have crime around that crack house. So, I mean, the regulation
Thank you.
and rules are necessary in this regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please call the final speaker, and then we'll go to you, sir.
All right, good morning, Chairperson Kiel and Honorable Board of Supervisors. I want to thank you, Supervisor Ridley Thomas, on your leadership regarding regulating nuisance tobacco shops here in L.A. County. My name is Gilbert Johnson with Community Coalition, and a key part of our work at Community Coalition is empowering everyday residents and youth to support and assist with the development of public policy that will positively impact the social and economic conditions in South Los Angeles. I spoke with hundreds of residents last year, last year as we collected surveys to identify key public safety issues throughout South Los Angeles, and smoke shop regulation was a high priority for thousands of people. I remember hearing youth talk about being harassed, robbed, pressured to join gangs, and buy drugs as they pass smoke shops to attend schools. This is highly unacceptable, and we believe regulation of these nuisance businesses can be done by prohibiting loitering and the consumption of alcohol and drugs on these premises, also by placing a cap on the number of smoke shops in L.A. County. A key piece is also seeing effective enforcement of the new guidelines that holds the business owners responsible and makes them respect our communities and holds them accountable to our communities. And so again, thank you Supervisor Ridley Thomas for adhering to this great concern that the community has lifted and elevated, and thank you for moving this motion forward.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Call the final speaker, please.
Would Karen Almazan please come forward, and staff will assist you.
No, I mean, I, I put that I oppose it, but I don't completely oppose it. I'd just like to say something very short. The arguments say that it encourages gang violence, but these establishments are placed in areas where it's, there's already a drug epidemic. Now, I work in West Covina. It's in a strip where there's two bars, and there's homeless people, there's people smoking drugs. In, in front of my work, I work across the street from the strip, there's people smoking drugs on the strip in front of the bars. Behind it, there's people smoking, there's, there's people living in the trashcans behind there, and there aren't very many police officers. I believe these, these places are good for identifying drug users, hard drug users, because those are the ones that cause the problems, because they tend to be petty criminals who are causing, they're stealing, and that's all I'd like to say. They, they're not gang members, they're petty criminals, they're on their own, they're not in a gang, they're on their own. Because I had friends that were homeless, and I don't trust them. But I, I still believe in them, that they can change, but... But I still believe in them, that they can change, but I actually studied addiction, and I decided to change my major because I'm not going to get paid eleven dollars an hour.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank my colleague Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas for bringing this forward. I really am interested in the report back on the impact that tobacco shops have in our unincorporated county. I particularly realize there's a lot of issues we talked about today. I'm particularly interested in the evaluation of the health impacts that are related to these nuisance properties. I know for years I have been trying to help one of my constituents in San Pedro who lives close to one of these tobacco shops, and -- excuse me. And her -- this is what happens to her. Every time she walks outside her door, every time she drives up, she begins coughing and choking because of the -- thank you. Offer a name of water in the name of Jesus. Because I guess we still allow smoking inside these tobacco shops. We allow smoking inside these facilities. We don't allow smoking inside restaurants, but we still allow smoking around these facilities. And this person's quality of life has been so negatively compromised because of the smoke. And she's tried to go to the city, but they're telling her that these tobacco shops have complied with all the current regulations and ordinances, and they're -- just because they're in an industrial area doesn't mean that there's not residences on the next block over. So I really appreciate you bringing this forward. I hope there's something we can do, you know, even with the -- after we take care of our unincorporated areas, something that we can even look at in terms of the state law that allows these to be cited in residential buffering industrial areas. Again, they really, you know, and people say, well, you know, can't you move? And, you know, if we don't know the answer to that by now, you know, no, people can't move. Our housing opportunities are so limited right now. There's waiting lists everywhere for people to find places to live. The fact that we're putting that burden on people who already have a place that they can afford, that they should just move because a business like this exists, I think is wrong. I think we should always look to protect particularly, first and foremost, the health of those who live in Los Angeles County. So I really appreciate you bringing this forward, and I'll be very interested in looking at this report when it comes back to us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Thanks to those who testified. There's a motion to approve this as amended by Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, seconded by Supervisor Han. Is there any objection to a unanimous vote? Seeing none, that will be the action.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The hour of 11:04 having arrived, we will move to our special set, which is File Item Nine, also listed as S1 as the special set, and we'll go again to Supervisor Ridley-Thomas.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's a great degree of pride and respect on behalf of the entirety of the board who has lifted the issue, which I believe you and the balance of the board recognize to be the most urgent moral and civic issue facing the county of Los Angeles. I just feel very strongly that we have a great opportunity and obligation. The voters of Los Angeles County have saluted our leadership in this regard. The question of homelessness is not going away without a fight, a smart fight, a compassionate fight, a fight that we wish for everyone to be in and involved. We've invited several persons to punctuate this point. I just simply want to ask that you be aware of on Friday, 10 o'clock, the United Way and a multifaceted groups, a group of stakeholders, service providers, and supporters will help us launch what we're describing as Everyone In. Everyone In is a 10-year campaign that will harness the energies of Measure H and nurture the public will so that community residents can be a part of a comprehensive set of solutions to confront the homeless crisis that has enveloped our region. Everyone In will create opportunities for education and engagement so that all of us can work together to help those who are yet homeless with the restoration of their dignity, purpose, in life. And now, Madam Chair and colleagues, I want to suggest that we hear from those who have signed up to make remarks on behalf of their respective constituencies. The Homeless Initiative here is led by Phil Ansell as a part of the CEO's office, and we can then move to the formal declaration of Everyone In on March 9th at the conclusion of those remarks, if that's consistent with your pleasure, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. I only want to add that it's sort of interesting the way we look at things sometimes just because of how we name them.
Yeah.
When I first heard the concept of whole-person care, it was a program that had some limitations, but not in my mind. I mean, the thought was, if we're going to do health in the county, then that we should look at people in a holistic way and think about what kind of health care they want. In this case, it's very much the same. We talk about everyone in. It means to me, everyone in, that is, not on the streets, in a place, in a shelter, in a home, in a residence, in, out of the rain. Everyone, everyone stay in. That is, you have a place, let us help you stay in it. Let us make certain that you can stay in it. And thirdly, I think the larger idea, everyone in means we're all responsible for this. I mean, that's sort of what I hear from, I think, this very, very good name. So if it's all right with you, Supervisor, we'll go to Mr. Ansell.
Yes.
And then I believe you've invited some speakers, and we'll call them forward, and then those members of the public who signed up. So, Mr. Ansell, would you care to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Ridley-Thomas, members of the board. A year ago tomorrow, the voters of Los Angeles County took an historic action in approving Measure H, and in so doing, they said that they were in. They were in this movement to prevent and combat homelessness and bring our homeless neighbors home. Since then, we've built on the voters' confidence and this extraordinary movement, which your board has been leading since launching the Homeless Initiative in August 2015, has continued to grow and spread as more and more organizations and individuals have joined this movement. In just the first six months of using Measure H to expand services, we enabled 3,350 homeless families and individuals to move into permanent housing. We connected over 3,000 individuals on the streets and in encampments to services through Measure H-funded multidisciplinary outreach teams. And we helped over 4,000 homeless disabled adults begin the path to securing federal disability benefits. So this movement is moving. And with the launch of the Everyone In campaign on Friday, there will be expanded opportunities for the residents of Los Angeles County to build on the historic action they took a year ago tomorrow and contribute in additional ways to bringing our homeless neighbors home by adding their voices and their feet to what they did in the ballot box a year ago. A critical element of that will be expressing their support for the citing of permanent supportive housing and affordable housing in communities across Los Angeles County and more broadly sustaining their participation in this countywide movement. I've been consistently sharing through the Homeless Initiative a quote from the Buddha who said that "a single candle can light a thousand others without diminishing itself." And I find every day in my job as the Director of the County Homeless Initiative that every day, more and more candles are being lit as more and more people join this movement to bring our homeless neighbors home and expressing and realizing a level of creativity and innovation that I have never before seen in my career with Los Angeles County. The launch of the Everyone In campaign will be a critical next step in continuing to grow the number of candles that are lit and increase the intensity of those burning candles as we work together to bring our homeless neighbors home. With that, it's my pleasure to introduce the President and Chief Executive Officer of the United Way of Greater Los Angeles, one of our most fundamental partners in this movement, Elise Buick.
Welcome.
Thank you. So what an exciting day. I can think of no greater tribute for the one-year anniversary of Measure H than the launch of this campaign on Friday. And I just want to applaud the Board of Supervisors, Sachi and Phil, for your partnership because we couldn't do what we do without you. And this campaign is really about harnessing and activating what we see as the silent majority who really want to be a part of the solution. I'm pleased to tell the board that we did a poll, and that poll showed when we asked voters, would you be supportive of supportive housing in your neighborhood for homeless? Seventy percent fully said yes. And so that's what this campaign on Friday will seek to do, is to activate residents all throughout the county and neighborhoods all throughout the county to be part of the solution. And we see this as a continuation of the dialogue that we started on a year ago with voters when we passed age. We are blessed in Los Angeles County to have everyone in. We have our elected officials, we have the business community, we have labor, we have neighborhood councils, we have nonprofits, we have partners who you're going to hear about after me. And that is the only way that we will be able to solve this issue is if everyone is in. So I thank the Board of Supervisors for your partnership, and United Way is proud to be your partner, and we will do this together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Buick, and thank you very much for your work and the work of United Way. Please call the rest of the people who were invited to speak on this item.
Would the following individuals please come forward? Jaclyn Wagner, Herb Hantaka, and Charlotte Dimas-Pinado.
Well, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jaclyn Wagner. I'm the Vice President and Market Leader for Enterprise Community Partners, and I'm excited to be here today to support the launch of Everyone In campaign. I wanted to say that, you know, even though voters agreed to tax themselves almost a year ago, we really didn't start seeing tax revenues to October, and so just hearing Phil talk about the progress we've made in five months is tremendous. Many of the partners and systems and players are still ramping up so that they can accelerate the delivery of services, and the fact that we are helping thousands of women, men, and children already is impressive. And so it's interesting to hear about the polling. Seventy percent voted for the tax, seventy percent support long-term solutions, but I bet 100% care about the progress we make. And I want to applaud the County Board of Supervisors for not only advancing policies and resources, but, you know, looking into accountability and making sure that everyone is engaged in housing solutions because we can't do it alone. And so this active engagement of Everyone In campaign is a great day on Friday, and I move that you approve this and proclaim March 9th as an Everyone In Day. Congratulations to you all for your leadership, as well as the United Way of being a champion of this work.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Herb Hatanaka. I'm the Executive Director of SSG, and along with my colleague Veronica Lewis, we're here representing SSG Hoppix. We're one of the leads in the implementation of Measure H in South Los Angeles, along with 35 other agencies and a host of housing providers. Thank you Supervisor Ridley-Thomas for allowing us to serve. I have some good news. In a very short time, in literally about a seven-month period, we've had some measure extraordinary success, I should say. Twelve hundred families and individuals have been served with one of our housing products, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, the prevention of being evicted, and probably the most intensive service that we have is the Crisis Family Housing and Crisis Housing for Adults. When you go to sleep tonight, please be reminded that 600 people are now sleeping in a bed that would ordinarily be living on the street. The way the trending goes, we project that each month going forward, 350 new families and individuals will be housed through this Crisis Family Housing Program and Bridge Housing. We're proud of our effort, but nonetheless aware of the fact that to sustain this requires a massive expansion of the housing inventory, of which we know to be this Everyone In initiative, how important it is. I tell you that recently, we were terminated from a housing project in La Poony, and we were stunned, literally stunned, by the intensity of the opposition
Thank you.
to anything homeless and anything mentally ill.
Thank you.
So we're all here to support the initiative. Thank you for your leadership, Board of Supervisors and the United Way.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Charlene Dimas-Pinado, President and CEO of the Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic. As a community-based organization, we are committed to doing our part to end homelessness in the greater Los Angeles area. More importantly, we are here in support of Supervisor Mark Ridley-Thomas' motion to support and participate in Everyone In in the county of Los Angeles. As a CBO that is providing mental health services, housing, life skills, job training and placement to transition-age youth formerly in the foster care system, many who are already parents, it is our objective to address the complex issues that contribute to homelessness and its devastating effects. We are mobilizing the community we serve, working collaboratively with political leaders, businesses, mall and large, landlords, faith-based institutions, sister organizations, and private foundations, and making fundamental differences to the necessary work to end homelessness. The Board of Supervisors can count on the Los Angeles Child Guidance Clinic to do everything in its power to make a meaningful difference in the life of those less fortunate. With the passage of Measure H and proclaiming March 9th as Everyone In, we are leveraging opportunities, leveraging resources, and together ending homelessness in L.A. County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Executive Officer, please call those who've signed up to speak.
Would the following individuals please come forward, and staff will assist you? Dr. Genevieve Calaveral and Eric Previn, please come forward. Please come forward.
Welcome.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Dr. Genevieve Claveral. You know, I know we have done a lot of progress and so on, and I'm very pleased with that. But where I am a little bit concerned, I don't think there is a lot of place where people can apply for position. You know, we still know that there is 1,300 positions available in L.A. to be filled. So, you know, what is being done to get those, you know, filled? And that concerned me. I know we have done a lot of progress, and I know many people have benefited, but I think something needs to be done more. It was one job fair not too long ago, but it was announced like two, three days before. And, you know, we need much more of those, and that I think is lacking. And like I said, when I asked a long time ago, Mr. Phil Ansel, he told me all those new positions will have to be current position, which I think is absurd because it's going to take forever to fill those positions. And I also think some of the best individual who could help is people who have been homeless and have experienced it and know how to deal and access more, you know, homeless people and try to help them. They don't have to be currently employed to do that, and many probably would not qualify because they will have a long list of incarceration and so on and won't be able to obtain a current job. So I will really would appreciate if all of you look at that and make a special, you know, part for those people who can help in those positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, it's Eric Previn from the Third District, and I just want to volunteer a couple of individuals. One is a 20-year-old, and the other is in their 60s, both of whom are interested in helping out. And I asked Mr. Ansel, who's obviously monitoring this meeting now, so wasn't able to address it. It's the second couple of weeks in a row where I've had the chance, and I've not...I went to the website myself, and not helpful, unfortunately. There's just something about Lancaster, and it's my understanding, as you all said, that it's the people who are going to get us out of this and help. And when people are volunteering and looking forward to contributing in some way, I think it should be accessible in some meaningful way. So maybe one of the deputies could direct me to direct those individuals to the right people who could get started helping out. And obviously, the United Way has done a great job over the years, for the many, many years, and certainly a measure of appreciation is in order for this board for once again reminding us that the voters look forward to a big push, and we are making a big push. So we look forward to the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank Supervisor Ridley Thomas for bringing this motion to us today, and also thank the Board of Supervisors and the CEO and all of the staff and departments that have been working diligently for the past, I think, three years perhaps on this. And I also want to correct the record. Someone stated that the City of La Puente did not want to have a homeless facility there. It's actually was mental health, and it was in Avocado Heights, which is the unincorporated part of LA County. The only thing I would say to that is that we need to do more diligence when we are planning to have facilities, to talk to the community and really spend a good amount of time. Because if we don't educate the public, the folks that will be impacted in the surrounding area, then we do ourselves a disservice, and it's laborious. It takes a lot of time. There are people now that are speaking out because they don't want to see mobile trailers and showers placed near their communities. And it's unfortunate because the board here is looking at it in terms of different levels of service, and we all know that we all have to work together on that. I would just say that I'm happy that through Measure H, we've been able to fund what I call the Council of Governments, the COGS, that are out there in San Gabriel Valley, and I know in other parts of LA County, where they collectively come together and help to try to inform this discussion and help them plan for how they're going to attack the cities are going to attack homelessness. And we have given out planning grants. I think of the 47 cities that applied, 23 of them were in the San Gabriel Valley, and they still need help. Some of these city managers and staff there are very frail. They don't have enough capacity to actually deal with all the technical aspects of what's required to push out this kind of an initiative. So we're going to have to spend some time and put more skin in the game so that our cities will come around. I am...my heart gets broken when I hear some of my own cities or places in the San Gabriel Valley who say they don't even want to apply for the planning grants, and they've already made a decision. And I say why when many of the residents there are supportive of providing treatment and assistance, but we have to change that conversation. So I think a lot more time has to be spent with some of these elected officials, and I'm glad that the United Way and that everyone is coming about to say that it is our priority to try to address this human crisis. And all of us are going to have to work together: landlords, associations that represent our motel and hotel industries as well. We're going to also have to look at how we provide assistance in terms of our residents that are faced with rents that are out of control. Many individuals that we've heard here at the board have spoken about landlords raising their rent so outrageously in a short period of time, and that has caused many of them to become homeless, or having to go and live with another family for a short time and then in the end find out that they get kicked out of that place. We're not helping if we're not talking and conversing about what we can do to try to help mitigate that, and I know our board will also be doing that. So we have many tools that are available to us, and I think all of us are going to have to really understand the gravity, the economic consequences, if we do nothing. And the fact that we also have to pull together all of our departments, all of them, not just the Human Resources and Public Health and Department of Health Services and Mental Health, but everyone. This means Parks and Rec, it means a sheriff doing more, it means a sheriff also providing ample training to his recruits and others so they know how to deal with people that we are faced with seeing and providing service to, that may look like they're homeless and they may be, they may or may not be. But nonetheless, we have to have a different attitude and conversation. And I really think that all of these values that we heard earlier by the presenters are what we embody, but we do have to step up to the plate. And I, for one, think that our communities have to understand what that picture looks like, because that picture looks like LA County. The homeless population is made up of diverse populations by age, generation, socioeconomic, and even education, and we have to be able to explain that to people. So I hope that maybe in this exercise that we go through with everyone jumping in, that we also have some good explainers. We're going to have to embody that, where people are going to have to help us amplify that message throughout the county and beyond our borders, because I think other counties can learn lessons from us, in particular, Orange County at this time. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely, Supervisor. There was one further speaker who accidentally signed up for a wrong number but meant this one, so please call that speaker.
Would Karen Almazan please come forward?
Welcome back.
Now, I'd just like to say, one of the things that I know everybody...nobody likes to see people being homeless, but what nobody likes to accept is that one of the main causes of homelessness is drug addiction. And America, the United States, likes to look at drug addiction as a crime, when countries like Sweden, for example, treat it as a health issue. That's what it needs to be treated as rather than a crime. That's all I need to say. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Before I go to Supervisor Ridley Thomas to close, I also want to say, one of the things that we're looking at potentially with United Way and others who have emphasized this approach is there's a lot of talk about nimby's, but we want to start talking about yimby's. That is, yes, in my backyard. I see the need for it. I want to be part of the solution. I want to help. So I'm hoping that everyone that hears this, everyone that joins the kickoff on Friday, everyone that thinks that somebody ought to do something about this, look inside and join us, be a yimby. Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
I therefore move, Madam Chair and colleagues, that we proclaim March 9th, 2018, as Everyone In Day in the County of Los Angeles in order to commit to supporting and participating in this critical countywide effort and encourage all to become actively engaged in ending the crisis of homelessness in the County of Los Angeles.
And I proudly second, I think everybody...I just jumped in faster. Any objection to a unanimous vote on this proclamation? Hearing done. It is approved. Thank you so much to the speakers. Thank you for all the good work and all the good work that we're going to do. And all of you that are here for other matters, I want to see you in this as well. Be part of the solution. All right, we'll then move to File Item 18, held by Supervisor Solis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I do have some speakers, but I just want to start out by sharing with the board that last year, it came to my attention, a vital untapped resource. What I mean by that is that I was...had the occasion to visit Cal State Los Angeles in the district, and I met a group of our IT students just a few miles away from here, from this hall, and I was eager to see what they were up to and to invite them also to work with us, to get out of the classroom and to gain some real-life work experience, and doing it in partnership with the county. Meanwhile, here at the department, we have multiple departments that we know we've talked about are desperate for finding new and innovative solutions to old problems. And in part, the problem that we're facing may be at our doorsteps by encountering and partnering with our local colleges and universities and inviting some of these very talented students to come and be a part of the county, and having and sharing that experience through work, and then hopefully leading up to a permanent job. Very competitive field in IT, but we know that there are many people who want to stay here and will thrive here, and I know that this county wants to encourage that. So I've asked for Lisa Garrett from our Department of Human Resources, as well as Cal State President William Covino, who had to leave. He was here earlier, but we went on long, and he had to go back to work. But we have the Dean of Computer Science and Technology, Emily Allen, and we have three students that I believe will also be joining you. So, Madam Chair, if we could please hear from them first, and then I'll go into a motion. Thank you.
Absolutely. Ms. Garrett, do you wish to begin, or Dean Allen?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and the Honorable Board of Supervisors. Lisa Garrett, Director of Personnel for the County of Los Angeles. First, I'd like to thank Supervisor Solis. I thank you for your vision and for facilitating this unique opportunity for the County of Los Angeles to tap into innovative ideas and talents of students that are currently enrolled in information technology programs within our local universities. While the county has various internship programs, this targeted partnership specifically in information technology will help us to infuse the county with diverse, well-trained, and cutting-edge IT talent. The opportunity to meaningfully partner with local universities, to provide students with the ability to apply what they're actually learning in the classroom, and to expose them to valuable career opportunities within the County of Los Angeles is a winning proposition for us all. The county departments can offer a myriad of blended learning projects to the students who will in turn get a glimpse of the challenging and rewarding programs within the County of Los Angeles, even outside of IT and for the interest of public service. I'm extremely pleased that DHR will be an integral part of this game-changing endeavor for the County of Los Angeles and with the first of our university partners, Cal State Los Angeles. With this pilot project, DHR will attract and recruit promising IT talent to the county's academic partnership program and other IT positions within the county through both onsite and virtual job fairs, video interviewing, and various social media outlets. What the county departments will facilitate blended learning assignments for students, which will provide them with challenging, real-life workplace issues needing new age solutions within the county. We'll create pipeline programs and career pathways to the county's IT workforce based on the experience that the students are going to gain through the pilot program. Lastly, we'll expand this technology pilot to other local universities, computer technology schools, trade schools, and technical schools. So again, I thank Supervisor Solis for this motion. I also want to thank our county partners who participated in the pilot, and that includes Public Library, Department of Parks and Recs, and the Executive Office of the Board. So with that, I'm now going to introduce our member from Cal State Los Angeles, Dr. Emily Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Before you speak, may I ask the executive officer to call the third presenter up?
Would the following individuals, Patrick Fliner, Marcia Mejia, and Matthew Gertlins, please come forward.
Thank you. Dr. Allen.
Emily Allen, Dean of the College of Engineering, Computer Science and Technology at Cal State Los Angeles. Good morning, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to address the Board of Supervisors and the public this morning. We're grateful for the opportunity our students have had, or having, to work with the county. For a few minutes, I want to focus on the benefits of our partnership for Cal State LA students and for the public and the greater Los Angeles community. Cal State LA is ranked number one in the nation for upward mobility of our students. A comprehensive national research study by the Equality of Opportunity Project was recently published in the New York Times and found that no other university in the nation does a better job of transforming low-income students into high-income earners. At Cal State LA, we look for ways to maximize our students' educational experiences by providing opportunities for real-world engagement. The College of Engineering, Computer Science and Technology has as its motto, "Commit to Excellence, Engage in Community." Our students take this injunction very seriously. They come to us from all over Los Angeles County, and after graduation, they mainly seek employment in LA County. They want to give back to the communities from which they came, and they have a firm commitment to making LA a better place to live. Our 11,000 engineering, computer science, and technology alumni are out there every day, managing the airports, the transportation systems, the utilities, the fire service agencies, designing and building new construction, working in entertainment, aerospace, and automotive companies, and contributing to the high-tech businesses that make LA a thriving and amazing place. One of the ways we prepare our students for the workplace is through our Senior Design Project Program, a year-long engagement in which engineering and computer science students work in a team to deliver a real product to a real customer.
Thank you.
Advised by a faculty member and a technical liaison from the sponsor.
Thank you. Can you summarize the last couple of lines?
Yes. I'm just about to introduce the students.
We'll take it in writing, too, if you want.
Right. Okay. So this year, the county sponsored three projects, and we'll hear from the lead student in each project: Patrick Fliner, Matthew Gerlitz, and Maurice Mejia.
Very happy to have you here. Anyone can go first. Go ahead.
I'll start. Hi, my name is Patrick Fliner. I am a student at California State University, Los Angeles, and I am a member of the team that is currently working with the Los Angeles County Department of Parks and Recreation. Parks and Rec has...they oversee over 70,000 acres and manage 182 parks across Los Angeles County. As you can guess, it's a large amount of space they have to cover. To do this, they have 600 vehicles at their disposal, and with 600 vehicles requires the need to keep track of who's driving them, where every vehicle's going, a lot of data that needs to be created. So currently, I believe you have a handout. Slide 2 shows the current form that every county employee who uses one of these vehicles has to fill out whenever they drive the car. As you can probably guess, it's a...it's kind of a lot of data points to fill in for a person. As you can probably guess, it's a, it's kind of a lot of data points to fill in for a person. And if there's a time crunch, it takes time for them to fill out the form, and then it's like, oh, no, I might be late. So what Parks and Rec is, they came to us with an IoT solution at the beginning of the school year. IoT stands for Internet of Things, which is connecting devices through the Internet to exchange data. It's a very basic level of it. So the third slide is our implementation of it so far. Every car will have a tiny computer within it that will track where every vehicle goes through GPS. Employees will just need to tap their ID badge to say that they are using the car, and then they're off to go where they need to go. When the tiny, when the little computer hooks back up to the Internet, it'll then send the data off to county servers, where it can, the data can then be monitored and edited for managerial and other purposes. We would, my team would like to thank you for this great opportunity. This is a fantastic project for us to be working on.
This is very good work. Thank you. Very impressive. County certainly is benefiting from this program. Thank you so much, Patrick. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Maurice Mejia. I'm also a student at Cal State LA, and I'm here to talk to you about the collaboration with the County of Los Angeles Public Libraries. As you know, the County of Los Angeles Public Library has 87, I mean, the County of Los Angeles has 87 libraries countywide, and they serve 10 million people. They recently started offering a lot of services online, such as Lynda.com, eBooks, and movies. These are great learning services. But that said, you still need to go to a physical library location and get a physical library card to be able to access these wonderful services. The County of Los Angeles Public Library came to us so that we can build an online portal, where you can sign up yourself and start taking advantage of these services at any moment from anywhere. We are looking to help automate the current registration process. As you can see on the handout on page six, my team and I have taken this opportunity to implement some cool new technologies to make signing up a fun and easy experience. We're building a portal that's usable by any device, iPads, iPhones, you name it, you should be able to sign up there. We also want to make this form accessible to anyone, so we want you to be able to speak to it, kind of like you do with Siri, and you never have to touch a keyboard. Another way we're doing this is, we think it will be awesome if you can just take a picture of your driver's license and have the form auto-populate the information from there. This will get you going as quickly and as possible. My team is having a lot of fun building and implementing these features. We've learned a lot, being students at Cal State LA, but thanks to this collaboration with the public library, this has given us a chance to apply the knowledge we've learned.
Very impressive. Very impressive. Thank you. So all I have to do is go, "Library card, check out wrinkle in time and deliver."
Yeah.
Right. Very futuristic. Thank you. But I'm a little sad. I've carried my library card for 103 years. It is a little worn around the edges. Third presenter, please.
Hi, my name is Matthew Gerlitz. I'm one of the leaders of the Senior Design Group, working for the Executive Office. The LA County, the LA County Hall of Administration has approximately 2,000 visitors each day. Most constituents visiting the Hall of Administration require additional assistance in order to find where they need to go. LA County has teamed up with Cal State LA to assist the county in creating innovative and cost-effective solutions to better serve our communities. Currently, the Hall of Administration uses physical directories, which will be replaced with a new digital directory system. To help facilitate this change, the Executive Office has tasked our team to develop a digital interface to assist constituents with navigating throughout the building. Our goal is to automate the process of assisting the public in getting to their destination in a quicker and more effective way. In order to do this, we are developing an interface for the new smartboard directories that will include virtual assistant integration, and an interactive map, which will provide both written and visual directions to the constituents' destination. Examples of what we are working towards can be seen on the last two slides of your handout. This project has given us the opportunity to work and collaborate with the county within a professional environment. We also acquired industry-related knowledge and skills, gained practical experience, and dealt with real business problems. We would like to extend our thanks to the Honorable Board of Supervisors, the people of Los Angeles, and Cal State LA for this outstanding opportunity.
Thank you very much. Excellent. That's going to mean more to us, no offense, but you know, finding our way through the building. What do we have here? Thank you, this is a wonderful project. Shall we call the other people who've signed up to speak? All right. Thanks to all of you, thanks to the university as well, for nurturing your talent. We look forward to working more with you in the future. And others, please call those who've signed up to speak.
We have only one speaker, and it's Eric Previn. Please come forward. He's waving his time. He passed.
Mr. Previn passed on this item, so Supervisor Solis, did you wish to close?
Yes. First of all, Madam Chair, I'd like for all of us to recognize the students that just gave an excellent presentation, and give them a round of applause. Obviously, they are helping us already learn what efficiencies we can find here at the Hall of Administration and around the County of Los Angeles. I would like to read in my motion, a portion of it anyway, so we can be clear on where we're going with this, now that we've learned and extracted some really good information about how we can improve our services here at the County Board, and Hall of Administration, and throughout the county. So I'd like to move that the Board of Supervisors direct the Department of Human Resources to extend the pilot program to other local academic institutions, as recommended in the written report. In addition, direct DHR to work with local academic administrators, including those at Cal State LA, to conduct on-campus civil service examinations for relevant IT classifications, and conduct IT job fairs to increase accessibility to county employment opportunities. And also direct DHR to develop a mechanism for tracking how many students have and/or will obtain county employment by way of these types of partnerships, and perform outreach to county departments to determine other potential projects that these types of partnerships can assist. And then finally, I move that we direct the Internal Services Department, ISD, in conjunction with DHR, to determine the feasibility of executing as-needed agreements between county departments and local colleges and universities, to engage students and faculty members to assist the county in creating innovative and cost-effective solutions to better serve our communities, and report back to the Board in 60 days on May 8th, 2018, with the plan and recommended next steps. Again, Madam Chair, I want to applaud Cal State LA, President Covino, who couldn't be here, and all the students. And I'd like to ask all the students of Cal State LA who are here to please stand up and be recognized. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, so we have a motion in front of us, which has been distributed. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, seconded by Supervisor Han. Any discussion from the members? Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Just want to give a shout-out to Supervisor Solis for initiating the first pilot with three teams from Cal State LA. I support expanding this pilot and creating a career path so that IT students from colleges and universities throughout LA region will get to work on government technology projects and learn how to shape tech careers in the county. This is how we will continue to improve county services and drive digital transformation in government services. It will also build communities. These individuals are a part of communities that then add value to the greater Los Angeles County experience. So congratulations, Supervisor. I'm pleased to support it.
All right, seeing no further discussion or request to speak, I have a motion and a second. Is there any objection to a unanimous vote on this item? Seeing none, that will be the action. The final item that's been held was held by me, that is, item 33. Simply wanted to indicate, ask my colleagues if you would have any objection to bifurcating this item. It's item 33, and it recommends a settlement, which I would move that we would approve today, but there's also a corrective action plan that I think should be continued. This is one of the issues that we've discussed over time about how to deal with corrective action plans in terms of health, the provision of healthcare in the jail. There's been a big change in the way we deliver healthcare in the jail, and because many of these issues take a while to figure out and settle, often the corrective action plan no longer fits those people who are really more empowered to do things in the jail. We've had some discussions with county council, and I wanted to ask if you have any objection to continuing just the corrective action plan, the cap, so that we can make certain that those who are asked to do something in order to improve the kind of care that we can give in the jail are actually the people who are doing it now, and that we get some idea about how this really connects to the sheriff. Because often, as we discussed a couple of months ago, Sheriff's Department is kind of, in a way, the first responder. You know, here you are, you're locked away, you're ill, or you're injured, the deputy kind of decides, shall a doctor be called? And if someone else is called, as in this case, they have to decide whether a doctor is called. So we'll see whether we could have maybe a more specific corrective action plan that relates to our healthcare in the jail as it is currently. So that's all I wanted to say about it. Are there any people who signed up to speak on this?
We have one individual. Eric Previn, please come forward.
Okay. Vote on the settlement. Welcome.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from the 3rd District, and I appreciate your looking at that, that particular issue. This is an incident that took place in, it was a guy named Garza, and he was very crazy and banged his head, throwing himself off a desk, and they didn't do the appropriate thing. So, fast-forwarding, we do safety checks now, and you have draw-in, but Supervisor Kewell, I appreciate that. This is a May 2012 incident, it's March 2018, and it does take time, and I like the rightsizing of the corrective action plan idea, but I do not like, first of all, this conversation over here, but having the county risk and litigation reports moved to presentation-only, which you did two weeks ago, in one of the most tectonic shifts against transparency we've seen in county government. So whereas I appreciate you occasionally chirping up when you see something that's wrong, this was a $5.9 million settlement, thank you for that, but the public needs to weigh in on these things, because that is eight years, or what, 12 to 18 is six or seven years. We have liability that's spread all over the place. Estabrook knows about it. He can inform us. We need to know. Get role-plays in here, and let's have those reports annually. Thank you. And I'm very sad to see the daily news reporter be shipped out.
Thank you very much. Maybe there's some real news somewhere. I believe one more speaker has signed up, so please call that speaker forward. Sorry, welcome.
Hi, good evening. So there is a balance between preventative measures and to pay out when something like this happens. $6 million is not much, but when it comes to having the right proper medical care, when you have the right staffing in the probation department, it starts with the head. So I still need to know what Terry McDonald, what the Sheriff's Department Commission is going to be doing with the programs we have already submitted. That includes treatment facilities that are extensive, especially to inmates. That includes ECPR training for the probation officers. That includes training for ECPR and compassionate care for law enforcement. So overall, I'm very partial to this giving, but at the same time, if we can have proposals respected concerning incarceration, then I don't think this will be an ongoing issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to bifurcate this issue, as I indicated. I would move to approve the settlement amount. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to a unanimous vote on the settlement itself? Seeing none, we'll approve that. Secondly, I'd like to move to continue the corrective action plan. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any objection to a unanimous vote to continue the corrective action plan? Seeing none, that will be the action. All right, thank you very much. That concludes the items held by supervisors. So at this time, it's appropriate to hear from members of the public who've requested to address the board on items that were not held by supervisors, but are on today's agenda. So Madam Executive Officer, please call them forward, and the items that they've held.
With the following individuals, please come forward when I call your name. Dr. Genevieve Cleverell has requested to address the board on items 1D, 13, 14, 19, 21, 22, and 25. Eric Previn has requested to address the board on 1D, 1P, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 13, 14, 19, 20, 23, 24, 25, 27, 32, 41A, and CS1. Branna Hawkins has requested to address the board on Agenda Number 13. And with the following individuals on Agenda 16 and 17, please come forward. John Heath, Kathleen Cottles, Tony McDonald Tabler, Ardi Bahami, Helen Sellers, and Alicia Moth Smith.
Thank you, and welcome. Go ahead, Doctor.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Dr. Genevieve Cleverell. On Item Number 13, which is a motion from Supervisor Han, I'm totally in favor of that. I think there's so many food where discarded, because there's so many restrictions for people to donate, you know, and so on, so I think we need to improve that. On Number 14 is about the new location for the healths. I wonder why we need so much expansion for physical office. And on Item 21, also is another sole vendor contract, and you know, I'm acutely allergic to those sole vendor contracts, especially on that issue. It's one on information technology, and we are paying, and it's so many people who are involved in a field, and you saw it this, you know, a few minutes ago, how many people are working on information technology, including students. And on this one, we have a sole vendor for a company who can transfer digital, I mean, written information to digital format. So that's not, you know, a huge private and very rare capacity, so I don't think we should have a sole vendor. And on Item 25, with a nurse call system, and I was amazed that no nurse participated in selection, and again, it was a sole vendor contract. And it would be nice when it's something affecting a specialty, like nursing or medicine, is people in that field participate, so they can share what's best and more valuable to them. Many times, people do not use equipment and so on, because they did not participate in the development of that technology. So that's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from the 3rd District. And the Item 24 today is your job order contractor, contracting lineup, and you've got various proj- projects. And again, it's, orders up to 75,000 are passed through with very little in the way of, it has to come back to the board only if it's larger than that. It's not, there's something wrong there, and you need to look at it. And the Gordian Group from South Carolina took, like, almost 2% of all of these contracts to make sure that we weren't experiencing these kinds of problems, which we've seen by our own auditor. So, I really would ask that we get that money back, that we fire this group and do what San Diego, which is a large jurisdiction, does, which is run their own job order contract. Those kids from Cal State LA are so bright, the technology capability of this county is so deep, we don't need to send 1.95% of anything to South Carolina. It's really something to look at, Supervisor Tibi Hamai, I would appreciate it. Soul Source makes no sense, and when you hear that Fujifilm and Siemens at Item 20 are the folks who are negotiating for, they're the only ones who can provide this service, well, that's because the RFP or request for bids. You've got Patrice Salceda up in Wickham's office, working on making those subtle distinctions so that it looks like competition, but it's actually written so that just one provider can make it. And that would be Supervisor Ridley Thomas knows Motorola for the L.A. Ricks. There's the chief of L.A. Ricks, Sachi Hamai, right there. Item Number 13 is some really good news. This is Waste Prevention Week. What a great idea. That is not congratulating the supervisors, that's an idea where, hey, we have restaurants and hotels and all the, let's, and there's some efforts already being made, coordinate, putting that out the door to the people who need it most. I think that's a great idea. It's called DROP, which means Food Donation Recovery Program, which is a better drop than the Jack Dolan article, which is Deferred Retirement Option Plan, which causes Angelenos' eyes to pop out of their heads because cops and fire department folks were taking double pay for years while Mr. Ridley Thomas was approving it.
Thank you.
Along with Janice Hahn and Eric Garcetti, back in the City Council. Outrageous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm Brianna Hawkins, Policy Director with the Los Angeles Food Policy Council, and we would like to extend our support for Supervisor Han's recommendation to declare this week Food Waste Prevention Week. LEFPC represents a network of over 6,500 individuals and organizations working to ensure that all people have access to good food, which is healthy, sustainable, affordable, and fair. We wholeheartedly believe that extra food is not a waste product, but a valuable resource that can feed hungry people, or if it's inedible, replenish our soils as compost. LEFPC has been an avid supporter of the county's lack-free initiative, and we facilitate our own Food Waste Prevention and Rescue Working Group, providing technical assistance to local community organizations working to reduce food waste throughout L.A. County. In 2012, LEFPC established the Good Food Purchasing Program, which works with public institutions to commit to values-driven food procurement and food waste reduction strategies. This program recognizes public departments that donate their surplus food to local food banks, or buy from local farmers, or support businesses that pay fair wages through a ranking system similar to the LEED system, but based on values of sustainability, health, fair labor, local economies, and equity. Since the adoption of the Good Food Purchasing Program in L.A. USD and in the city of L.A., which Supervisor Han, you were supportive of in the early days before you left council, we've been able to improve the nutrition and quality of over 750,000 meals daily to low-income Angelenos, so that food is actually eaten and not thrown away, while we redirecting close to 15 million into our local economy. The program has now grown into a national initiative with adoptions in the Bay Area, Austin, and Chicago. We want to make L.A. County the first county in the country to adopt the Good Food Purchasing Program. And we've discussed GPP with the staff of most of your offices, as well as DPH and the Sustainability Office, and have invited you all to celebrate the five-year anniversary of GPP in Los Angeles at the Historic Viviana this Thursday. We hope you can make it, and again, want to express our gratitude for uplifting the issue of food waste reduction in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, John Heath, United Homeowners. Honorable Supervisors, I take no pleasure in noting for the record that you and your staff have consistently ignored the substantial evidence presented by your constituents that the View condo development is a dangerous and illegal project that will harm our historic community and put our residents at risk. Simply requiring a basic environmental assessment, or EIR, for a huge building on a relatively small site is apparently too much to ask to ensure that our residents' health and safety is protected from a project that couldn't be built in a worse location. Traffic, earthquake, and fire hazards, air quality and height are just a few factors that should motivate you to require preparation of an EIR at minimum. The fact that you have chosen not to in the face of these risks leaves us with no other choice than to seek legal redress and protection from the courts, which will undoubtedly cause the taxpayers more than if you simply upheld your duty to protect the public trust instead of capitulating to the whims of those who make the biggest campaign donations. In this era of scrutiny over the NRA's undue influence over Congress and illegal campaign donations to local officials by developers and other special interests, you may be assured that we, your constituents, will do our civic duty and utilize any and all legal means to hold you and the County of Los Angeles accountable for all your policy decisions that affect development in our community. This is not an affordable housing project, and worse, your actions in this matter will make it more difficult for us to engage our community members to support future efforts to develop affordable housing and tackle the widespread homelessness problem that we all agree is a crisis. Congratulations on setting policy that counters your stated goal that you were discussing earlier today on dealing with the homelessness crisis in Los Angeles County and violates the public trust. And let me just quickly say, since County Council is here, as a matter of law, Section 22.28.110 does not permit the building of an 88-unit residential condo development in a C1 zone.
Thank you.
With the CUP, you can do an apartment complex.
Thank you very much.
But not condos, so the developer's application is improper as a matter of law.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm Katron Cottles. And again, this is a case of not in our severely hazardous backyard. The proximity of Windsor Hills School to the View is a strong reason to stop or make smaller this condo project. Vast amounts of soil will be excavated to make room for 206 parking spaces, soil contaminated with chemicals from the oil field, all this without an EIR, the absence of which will endanger the health of 500-plus little children. Our hearts break when we think of schoolchildren who fall victim to gun violence. Contaminated chemicals are far less visible, but every bit as dangerous as bullets. There are, there is a power wash mitigation measure to wash exterior school classroom walls. This is powerfully insufficient. For one, it doesn't wash the huge playground surface, our school ground surface, where children will kick up and inhale contaminated dust. What's more, power wash itself is harmful. Water will penetrate cracks and splinters in the wooden classroom wall, exterior walls, and old stucco walls, leaving water between walls that hide mold, that cause mold to grow and sicken children. I implore you, give our children the benefit of an environmental impact report. Let's not knowingly make victims of them.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Alicia Moleson Smith. I live in Windsor Hills, and our community has been betrayed and abandoned in favor of a project that's oversized and dangerous. Yet it's been approved for building without even the requirement of an environmental impact report. This is unconscionable. Our community where we live is already under an environmental siege with an active oil field located directly across the street, emitting gases, including methane gases, an earthquake fault that runs feet away from the land where this project is slated to be built, running directly, as Ms. Cottles shared, through Overhill Drive onto the playground of our local elementary school. The children of Windsor Hills Elementary School are a population of vulnerable, sensitive receptors, as defined by the AQMD, yet no environmental impact report was required. An elementary school located this close to a project like this should have been caused enough to require an environmental impact report. Supervisors, your own peer and colleague, retired Congresswoman Diane Watson, shared with our UHA2 President John Heath, who just spoke, that there is a reason why a project like this has not been constructed or built on that lot in over 50 years. She said, and I'm quoting her with permission, "If this project is allowed to go forward the way it's been proposed, people will die." We're left to draw on all conclusions.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tony McDonald Taber, and I am a 40-year-disappointed resident of Windsor Hills View Park Community. As you are aware from our appeal document, hundreds of Windsor Hills View Park residents, including those residents who live within feet of the project site, are all opposed to this project for reasons of environmental traffic and seismic concerns. Our community members are dedicated and committed to protecting our community, and the integrity of our single-family neighborhood has always been sacrosanct. The health and welfare of our families and our inheritance are at risk. Our community members came before you to urge you to listen to the fears of residents whose safety and the peaceful enjoyment of their community is being threatened by this out-of-scale project. The developer who purports to providing relief to the Los Angeles affordable housing crisis by building these 88 luxury condominiums is the only one feeling relief, because after years of failed attempts to push this oversight project on the previous county officials, the developer finally found a weak link in the decision-makers to get this overly-sized structure approved. The consensus in our community is, it appears political friendship is more important than community and requiring reasonable environmental studies. Supervisor Ridley Thomas's motion to deny our appeal and your decisions to support him, despite the compelling facts and serious concerns of our community members, despite our legal and expert findings, despite the fact that there was no EIR, despite the fact that entitlement was granted even though the project failed to meet the conditional use-permit burden-approved guidelines, is baffling and leaves us with only one conclusion. But it is encouraging to know, however, this process for our community is not over, and comforting to reflect on the fact that our elected officials who have chosen to act in the best interest of a developer's profits over the resounding voices of opposition from our community member is hopefully exactly what voters from all districts will remember when casting their next ballots. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Executive Officer, please call the remaining speaker, and then we'll go to you, ma'am. Hold on one sec.
Would Reverend Dr. Mello Desire please come forward?
All right. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Supervisors.
Good morning.
My name is Dr. Helen Sellers. I live in Windsor Hills. Supervisors, you have rubber-stamped a project that threatens the health, safety, welfare of our community. We have submitted reports showing methane gas possible leaks on this project area, the closeness of an abandoned oil well. The project itself has an earthquake fault line running right through it, but you still approved this project. This project is dangerous and is very poorly planned. All the reports that you have received regarding this product, this particular project, should have given you the opportunity to go back and look at the reports that have been done in the past and see that this project is oversized and dangerous. 88 units. We're looking at less than two acres here. 88 units. And how far do you have to go down into the earth's surface in order to put three layers of parking? This is very dangerous. We live in this community, and we expect better from our representatives. The United Homeowners Association, too, will move forward to the next step to stop this project, because we believe in the lives of the community. And we had hoped that you would believe in the lives of the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker, please.
So, it's a double-edged sword here. I feel for the community of View Park, Windsor Hills, but at the same token, View Park is also the most predominantly affluent African-American population in Los Angeles. So, they overlook South L.A., where many of us, that was affected by crack cocaine, because we didn't have the same economical levels or educational resources. A lot of us in the areas, even though we're still in South L.A., a lot of us ended up in jail, a lot of us didn't have opportunities. So, right now, it's surprising to me that I do see a lot of people from View Park that come out, yes, and they have very valid reasons. Yes, there is environmental protection study that has not been validated, I guess. They feel that that's dangerous to the children, but what's more dangerous is a lack of opportunity. What's more dangerous, I'm sure a child is going to get murdered before any type of chemicals reach them. I don't think that their main concern of that the children's welfare being is at stake here. Really, you guys are upset because you're going to miss out of a beach viewpoint, you're going to look, the overlook at the ocean and stuff, the view that you had before is not going to be there because of this condominium project. But what I didn't like was that it was told to us it was going to be affordable housing. They didn't tell us it was going to be 88 condominiums. Okay? That changes the ballgames. If you're really trying to reduce homelessness, you have to have affordable housing. Start with that first, because that's on top of the totem pole. And then, we as blacks in that neighborhood, if you know who you are, you don't come out for something that affects you directly, you come out for something like this. Really, when it comes time to really fight for what is needed in your neighborhood, don't do it when it's going to directly affect your living conditions. These kids have been suffering for 40 years. Where have you been?
Thank you, Doctor. We have one more speaker signed up. Please call him forward.
Would Herman Herman please come forward? He's requested to speak on all remaining items.
Mr. Herman, now.
So, as you already know, that I attended the LAPD Police Commission on Homelessness, and with only $1.2 billion unspent for affordable housing and a new diversity of housing, how do you plan to get veterans and the American people off the goddamn streets? 42 U.S.C., 1983, my First Amendment, and I'm here to exercise it under the law of discrimination. How long must we venture into the streets and sleep in tents and struggle with life elements? How long do we have to live and see the bombardment of homelessness in our communities when you're providing housing to those who have influence and money? Now, I'm not here to declare war on any specific group, but all I'm saying is, words to love for the people that you disregard as homelessness. With two measures, HHH, and Measure H, and any other bond and inadequate type of money laundering and corruption, how far do you wish to take this? You mean to tell me that you cannot provide FEMA monies when there's a crisis? Well, the homeless situation is a crisis, and you still have not come up with adequate service program and activities to take these venturespeople off the sidewalk and street and deal constructively? Did you hear that, Thomas? Constructively, not just for your own people, but for everyone and anyone demanding health and services and help to get off the goddamn street. This is the only way you can attack America, by your First Amendment. You come here and you advocate. I've been advocating for the homeless for over a decade, and I still see the problem. I just came from the City of Los Angeles, public meeting, and off at the corner of First and Lorena, by the goal line, which the goal line was running for 10 years, they want to build 300 units. And who is it for? What is it for? Those empty lots by MTA should be built with $1.2 billion, in essence, to the money that the supervisors are allocating on behalf of that. Stop wasting my time and stop wasting my tax-paying dollars. Get to work and bring the American people to a stabilized situation where they can deal with the economy and deal with life quality and issues in their communities.
Those are all the speakers who signed up on items before the Those are all the speakers who signed up on items before the Supervisors on the agenda. Time to vote on those remaining items.
The following items are before you: 1D, 1P, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 10, 11, 13, 14, 16, 17, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 32. And on item thirty-three, just to clarify, Supervisor Kuhl moves to continue the corrective action plan for two weeks to March twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, and item forty-one A. Those are before you.
All right. Move by Supervisor Solis, seconded by Supervisor Han. If there's no objection, please record a unanimous vote on those items. All right. The next thing on the agenda, since there are no specials, would be public comment. And so, Madam Executive Officer, please call the first people who signed up for public comment.
With the following individuals, please come forward, and staff will assist you: Alma Zapata, Connie Slaughter, Daniel Freeman, Dante Vitez, Eric Previn, Felix Reyes, and Frank Langston.
Please come forward. Welcome. We have less than twenty people signed up, so we'll give two minutes. Over twenty, it would be one minute.
Good morning to all of you and to the honorable members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Dante Vitales. I'm a retired RN from LA County Department of Public Health Inspection Division. I am a constituent in this first district, represented by Supervisor Hilda Solis. I have been a caregiver for my mother, who is ninety-two years old. My responsibility to this person is to assist her with the performance of activities of daily living. I do this job because I believe I am in a better position to provide the services she deserved, to maintain her dignity in a home care setting instead of being confined in a costly nursing home. I ask that you support our IHS program by negotiating in good faith with our union, SEIU twenty fifteen. The wages that we receive are just enough to make both ends meet. We ask that you support giving us a living wage that will allow us to continue providing care for the consumers. We also ask that you support giving us benefits such as health care. I will continue coming here every week if I have to, along with hundreds of other home care workers, until we receive the fair contract that will allow us to have a better quality of life. My hopes are for you to support our IHS program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Connie Slaughter. I live in District Five with Catherine Barker, and I am a home care provider. And I'm here today to talk to you regarding our situation of our taking care of our clients and our increase in our monies. We make eleven eighteen an hour, and I don't think that's enough for us to take care of our caregivers, our consumers, excuse me, our consumers. So at this time, I would like to talk with you five to let you understand how important that it is that what we do into our provider. I take care of a senior in my area. She lives in Palmdale, and I have a hundred and one hours with her. And it's not enough every week for me to take care of her because the things I do for her, I take her shopping, I clean her, I cook for her, and then, you know, sometimes I do a little bit more for her. And so throughout those days, sometime I have enough time to finish doing the things I need. And then the monies that I do does not take care of me to survive on my daily living. So I'm hoping that you guys can consider support with me with SEIU twenty fifteen on this increase in our wages with us. So thank you so much, and I appreciate you considering us today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, please.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Felix Reyes. Soy proveedor de cuidado en casa.
Good afternoon. My name is Felix Reyes, and I am an in-home supportive services worker.
Yo vengo del distrito uno, en la ciudad de Carahay.
I live in the first district in the city of Carahay.
Yo proveo cuidado a mi hija.
I provide care for my daughter.
No solo es cuidado. Tengo que ser desde su doctor, enfermero, asistente personal, cocinero.
Not only am I a provider, I'm also a doctor, assistant, and cook. Apologies.
Ya que ella requiere supervisión las veinticuatro horas, atención en todo, ya que ella no puede ser independiente.
She requires twenty-four-hour care.
Yo vengo a pedirles por favor que nos apoyen en la negociación de nuestro contrato con IHSS, entre IHSS y nuestra unión.
I come to ask for your support in our wages between IHSS.
Nuestra unión es SEIU Local twenty fifteen.
With our union, SEIU Local fifteen.
Ya que a partir de julio de dos mil diecisiete estamos bajo el salario, bajo del salario mínimo.
As of July two thousand and seventeen, we are below the minimum wage.
El trabajo que nosotros hacemos como proveedores de cuidado, la verdad que es un trabajo, nosotros lo hacemos con mucho amor.
The work that we do as in-home supportive services, we do it with lots of love.
Pero es un trabajo que no cualquiera puede ni quiere hacer.
But it's a job that not many can do nor can do.
Por eso es que venimos hoy a pedirle su apoyo para la negociación de nuestro contrato.
That's why we are here, asking for your support with our contract negotiations.
Ya que la verdad que ahorita el salario que tenemos no nos alcanza para una vida digna.
Our current wages do not afford us to have a earnest living.
Ya que ahorita nos encontramos así que en el límite de pobreza.
We are within the poverty lines. Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Madam Executive Officer, please call a few more speakers.
Josefina Ramirez, Maria Cibrian, Nina Hines, Penny Marcel, Reverend Dr. Mello Desire, Rubi Rivera, and Sarah Nova. Please come forward, and staff will assist you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chair Kuhl, members of the Board of Supervisors, Daniel Friedman here with Jeffrey Engels, Butler Mitchell. I'm here.
Could you talk a little more into the microphone so we can all hear you?
I will do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Daniel Friedman with JMBM here on behalf of the applicant in item thirty. I understand it was approved on consent. That's fine. I just wanted to add some comments on a few items for that matter. I'll try and make it very brief. As you know, the background of that item, it's a vesting tentative tract map that was approved by the Planning Commission in two thousand and seven. Then it was moved over to the Board of Supervisors for review. At that time, the board had some concerns, particularly dealing with emergency egress issues, and it particularly had to do with wildfire safety issues, particularly in that area, given that there was only one exit route from the neighborhood. There was a discussion about working with the community. The applicant agreed to work with the community, see if there is ways to address community concerns, and we have been doing that, and the applicant has been doing that. This is the next step in that process, and we understand that there's an interest by the county to have the item be returned to the Planning Commission. We are not going to object to that with the understanding that we met with county council. There was an agreement that the project is vested, as it is a vesting tentative tract map under state law, and there's an understanding, as far as we are concerned, that the remand is to focus on those issues that held the project up with the Board of Supervisors originally. So in that respect, the emergency egress, fire safety issues, it was our understanding that's why this is being remanded. And so to the extent that the staff report and the agenda talks about performing additional sequel analysis, we're just hoping that we're clear as we move forward and working with the county and working with the Planning Commission that that's going to be the focus of this remand, and that's going to be the focus of the Planning Commission's further review. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, it's Eric Previn in the general public comment. And this morning, we had an invocation that was very nice by Supervisor Kuhl, but there was an individual who had been scheduled, and they had a hard time coming in the door for various reasons, but they had been reaching out, and unfortunately, they were sent away. And I felt terrible because I thought, you know, we had so many then presentations for the youth, and I just wanted to say that the man who was going to do the invocation wanted to talk about the youth because he is so concerned, as many of us are. I think at the Oscars, there was that beautiful ceremony where somebody said this, I think it was Guillermo del Toro, said this is for the youth because that's so important. So I hope we can get it better in the future. Starting right on time has merit, but waiting for people has merit. I don't know. It was just a heartbreaker. And in conclusion, I just want to lend my support for the in-home health care worker. This is the best deal in the world to have these people, and we ought to pay them reasonably. Those Cal State LA kids are getting almost eighteen dollars an hour, twenty-one for some of the kids coming right out of that call. Let's get these people something fair and reasonable. They save the public a fortune. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Nina Hines. I'm a constituent by the fourth district, a representative supervisor for Janice Hahn. I'm here today to talk about the importance of the IHSS program. I've been a home care provider for my daughter for ten years. She has Down syndrome. It's important that I be home and care for her. As a caregiver, a single mom, I'm trying really hard to take care of her with the low budget that's going on. It's hard for me to care for her. I try to be at home with her, give her her medicines, take her to several different doctors. She was airlifted from one hospital to another, and if I'm able to care for her, that's the best, this is the best program that's ever happened to us and our family. And I just want to thank everyone for hearing me out today.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, please.
Do you want to go?
No.
You want?
Anybody step up to that mic?
Okay. Hi. Good afternoon to all the members.
Good afternoon.
My name is Josefina Ramirez, and I come from the district number three. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to say my story. I take care of my mom. I've been taking care of my mom for more than ten years, five without pain and five with pain until I found the program IHSS. My mom cannot see or hear, so I take care of her and everything, even on the smallest things. I take her to the doctors, I take her to dialysis. With this program, I'm able to, without a raise, I'm not able to support my mom or keep her in the house. I'm asking for your support to getting, supporting getting better benefits and raise so we could have a decent life, so I could able to keep my mom at home. And I ask for you, you could count that we'll be here every week, me and myself, with every other hundred of workers, to ask for a decent wage so we could support our families and have a decent life. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, counsel. I'm glad to speak to you again. Last time I talked to you, between ten months and a year ago. A check was delivered to me by the mail person for approximately $250,000. I looked at it briefly, and I said to myself, me and my family can move away from here now. There was a knock on my door. My granddaughter was coming home. About, a friend brought her home, a mine. I put the check on my bar, went outside on the porch, talked to the friend for a while, came back in the house, the check was gone, and they wouldn't be seen again. I went to the police. The policeman asked me, who's living in your house? Who's living in your house? My son-in-law was living in the back, he was living in the back of the house, and there was a door there, and that door was always locked, so I didn't know he was back there. So the policeman told me, well, we not going to help you. And they didn't. I went back to him several more times. I got no response from him. And the thing about it, my son-in-law since then, he hadn't worked in two years, came up with three brand-new cars. You understand? I don't know how he done that, unless he's a magician, but I kind of think he took my money. That's what I kind of think. Because a check don't walk. It don't walk. Somebody's got to take it. There wasn't no breeze in the house, the wind wasn't blowing. So I'm under the impression that he took my check. He took my money. And I believe he had help. I believe he had help. With a $250,000 check, you can't cash it with no audit trail. It's got to leave an audit trail. The audit trail has been erased. A $250,000 check will leave an audit trail as big as an elephant.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counsel.
Next speaker, please.
Good day, Supervisors. I've come today to speak to you, Hilda Solis, on behalf of the Clean Air Coalition and my neighbors regarding the Athens Community Benefit Fund. My name is Penny Maciel. I am and have been a resident of the unincorporated area of Avocado Heights, which includes North Woodyear, Bassett, and a small portion of La Puente since July nineteen sixty-four. I am now seventy years old. For fourteen years, I have worked alongside with the residents in my community to mitigate the crime of air pollution caused by the thousands of tons of garbage that was and is today delivered daily by Athens Disposal Service in and around our community. Former Supervisor Gloria Molina and Commissioner Valdez have publicly stated that Avocado Heights has an unfair amount of garbage transported through our community. In your closing statement on January thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, Supervisor Solis, you talk about the Los Angeles County Sanitation District impacting the first district across the Puente Valley to justify giving the Athens tipping fee, otherwise known as the Athens Community Benefit Fund, to other communities outside the CUP ninety-seven dash zero-six-zero dash one designated boundaries. Surely, reason would dictate that these funds belong solely to the unincorporated Avocado Heights, Bassett, and Northwood area. In the three years that you have been our supervisor, you have refused to meet with our members of our community to discuss the dispersal of the $4.5 million of Athens tipping disposal fees. This money could be used by our schools to update computers and reference books, provide a morning breakfast to our students, educational field trips, summer science and math camps, a community center, and a host of other beneficial projects. Supervisor, you continue to remain silent and distant. We, as a community, have been patient and willing to meet with you on your terms.
Thank you.
Supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Cibrian. Yo vivo en Panorama City, del distrito tres.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Cibrian, and I live in the third district in Panorama City.
Soy una proveadora de cuidado en el hogar desde hace diecisiete años.
I am an in-home supportive services worker for over seventeen years.
Tengo una hija de treinta y cinco años que tiene retraso mental.
I have a daughter who is thirty-seven years old with a mental retardation.
Y vengo en nombre mío y de todos los demás compañeras que hacemos este trabajo.
I come on behalf of myself, but also my fellow coworkers who do this job.
Sobre todo que este trabajo de cuidar personas adultas o incapacitadas no es nada fácil.
Providing care for adult members and disabled members is not easy.
Les estoy pidiendo por favor a todos, todos los honorables supervisores que nos apoyen en nuestro contrato.
I'm asking all the honorable supervisors to support us in our contract negotiations.
Porque con el salario que tenemos ahorita de once dieciocho, no tenemos suficiente o pagamos renta o compramos comida.
Our current wage of eleven dollars and eighty cents is not sufficient enough to pay for rent or food.
Y el trabajo que hacemos es demasiado, sobre todo para las personas que tienen a sus consumidores postrados en cama.
Our current work is voluminous in volume and is too much for the care that we provide.
Entonces, por favor, les pedimos que, por favor, nos apoyen porque nosotros...
Entonces, por favor, les pedimos que, por favor, nos apoyen porque nosotros estamos luchando por justicia y dignidad.
We're asking for your support because we continue fighting for justice and dignity.
Un salario justo es el que nosotros merecemos porque es el trabajo que hacemos.
A just salary is what we deserve because that's the care that we provide and that we do.
En todos los Ángeles, todas las personas que hacemos este trabajo.
In all of Los Angeles, the people, us people that provide this kind of work.
Este trabajo primeramente lo hacemos con paciencia y con dignidad.
We first perform this job with patience and dignity.
Y compasión para las personas que nosotros cuidamos.
And compassion for all the people we provide care for.
Por favor, les pido que se pongan la mano en el corazón y se acuerden que nosotros, las trabajadoras de cuidado casa existimos.
I please ask of you to support us and remember that we do exist.
Y tengamos nosotros un mejor contrato para mejores salarios y mejores beneficios.
And support us obtain a better contract for, with better benefits.
Y mejores beneficios.
Better, and better benefits.
Muchísimas gracias y sobre todo la señora Sheila Q, que es mi distrito y es mi supervisora de mi distrito.
Thank you all and especially thank you Supervisor Sheila Q, who is my representative.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Muchas gracias. Before we go to the next speaker, Madam Executive Officer, could you call more people who've signed up to speak?
Would the following individuals please come forward? Teresa De Vera, John Walsh, Herman Herman, Fanny Ortiz. Please come forward and staff will assist you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sarah Nova. I am constituent in District 5, represented by Supervisor Catherine Berger. I am here today to talk about the importers of in-home supportive services program. I have been a home worker, a home care provider for seven years. I provide care for Catherine Zachariah, the lady on my right. She is 87 years old. She is, has physical, emotional, and psychological issues and 14 diagnoses. Also, she's cancer survivor. The broken knee does not allow her to walk, even though she wishes. I am assisting with personal care, but changing clothes on and off, preparing menu, purchasing products, cooking, serving food, washing dishes and clothes, feeding, washing teeth, denture, cleaning table dishes, washing clothes, combing, cutting nails, going with the wheelchair for all, giving right to doctors, going to pharmacy for medications, giving medications, eye drops, rubbing the back, massaging hands, finger, legs, back because of the cramps she very often has, sometimes at night. The night is very heavy. Sometimes the lady is confused and wants to go outside. Instead of going to the bathroom, she has cysts on the left kidney, gallstones, needs a special diet. She was lost when she tried to go out without my knowledge. As you, as you can see, it is not an easy job. It requires a lot of responsibility, patience, time, and strength. I took a class with Dr. Ramirez in order to be more qualified, to provide a better care. I would like to ask you to support our IHSS program by negotiating in good with our union, SEIU 2015. The wages that we receive do not correspond to the care we provide. I hope we will receive the fair contract that will allow us to have a quality of life. Your attention, time, and consideration are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I wanted to talk to February 10. We had a community forum on which we have invited you, Margaret Lee Thomas and Marquise Harris Dawson, concerning the Vermont-Manchester property of which you guys did not show up. All right? So with that being said, you sent this letter and you, you know, we have a court date in April concerning this. And this is ridiculous because a lot of the support right now for this metro station, it doesn't fare in comparison to what's really needed, which is the housing, the entertainment village, the shopping center opportunities that are needed. But how are you going on about it when you guys, especially all four of you who don't even live in South LA, supported a letter for illegal eminent domain for a property that is specifically designated for something else when you have Broadway and Manchester? You have so many other locations in South LA that are ready for development, you're not looking into that. And I really think that this double standards of pay-to-play and whatever hidden agenda that you have needs to come forth. Most importantly, our youth, especially Anthony Weber, you know, everyone is still outraged. You know, you guys are still supporting the sheriff with the same amount of funding, if not even more. And if Anthony Weber had a youth center, which none of you are even looking at, you know, this digital center would probably save not only his life, but many of the lives of the youths who have nowhere to go. The churches are not doing anything because you have them in their back pocket, okay? The developers are not, definitely not going to do anything for no, no financing. So who is really fighting for the young people? Are we just going to march every time that someone gets shot? No, I'm addressing to my people too because it's really the people that needs to come together, the organizations that are struggling to come together so we can help the county and the city direct our tax funding into the centers, hopefully that can be built, which are the prevention centers for suicide prevention and economic development.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Madam Executive Officer, would you call some more speakers, please?
Madam Chair, we've called everyone who's requested to speak under public comment.
All right, great. Please come up and fill the chairs. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Fanny Ortiz and I'm from Boyle Heights and I also work as an IHSS provider. I am a single mother of five with my youngest of special needs. She is quadriplegic. And while she's quadriplegic 24 hours a day, I only get paid three to four hours a day, making $11.18, which is not enough to be able to sustain a single household of six. And that's why we think that we're here to let you guys know that our voice needs to be heard, that we need you guys to work with us in getting a new agreement that is going to be cost-effective to the state, and to let you guys know that the quality of care that we provide to our loved ones expands their lives. And I can testify to that because my daughter, even though she's quadriplegic, she's legally blind and she doesn't talk, with, through the sound, she's able to communicate with me at home. So I know when I need to change her diaper, I know when I need to feed her, not based on a schedule, but when she needs, she's asking for those needs to be met. When I forget to put on the music because I'm concerned about other things, she lets me know that I need to put on the music so she can, you know, entertain herself. My story is one of many, but when I share, it becomes transformative. So please, we urge you to negotiate with the IHSS providers so we can continue getting better benefits and better wages. Because $11.18 for 119 hours and 35 minutes, it's not enough. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
John Walsh, logging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. It's such a relief to be over here, away from the racism. You got to understand, white people, white people will accept racism from black people as much as possible. Herb Wesson is despicable as far as his racism is concerned. Oh, no! Black people cannot be racists. Only white people. That's what they're going to be telling you. Margaret Lee Thomas, it does an excellent job. We hope that all the health problems in his family are cured and he's just the right person for the right job. And he's doing a good job as he, as he stands here. And we're, we're talking about, something happened incredible. The LA Times got sold. It got, first it was owned by a family, then it was owned by a corporation in Chicago, and now it's owned by a Chinese man. Now, you got to understand the white man. The white man doesn't believe that the Chinese people are racist. He thinks they're white like him. Well, I got news for you folks. The white man is racist. And so are the, Mr. Patrick. Patrick is, you don't know about it, the most powerful man in the city of Los Angeles is Mr. Patrick. He runs things and he runs them without any, any word. It's just absolutely nothing happens.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
So now that we have a homeless crisis, who are those suffering? Who are those with health and safety code violations under government code 4450? Who, under the safety and health of Section 19955, is dealing with a crisis in Los Angeles? Wasn't it the courts that demanded that local entities deal constructively with people who deal with homelessness? So why are we forcing our LAPD police to become social workers? Why are we making people who have enough stress on the job do something other than their job, which is called policing and patrolling? You take away services from other factors, weight and measures imbalance, become unbalanced, and we have another crisis of robbery and theft and a swollen, broken-down system in our local government? So as long as we're required to follow government code, upon the petition of people here with disabilities, are we dealing with the ADA.gov? Or are we simply going to ignore the outcry of the constituents that got up here to speak on public testimony for the record, saying to you, "They're not being paid, they're not receiving funds, they're not receiving adequate service for their disabled member"? That's discrimination. And along with Mr. Walsh's comment, yes, Herman Jason Wesson is a racist. And I'm kind of surprised that the FBI is sitting out in a car off of City Hall this morning, looking for those involved with corruption.
Thank you very much. That concludes those who've requested to address the board under public comment. So we'll go next to our final item in open session, which is adjournments in memory of those who passed away, beginning with Supervisor Solis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today I move that we adjourn in memory of Serge Somonatsian. Passed away last Monday, February 26. He was aged 75. Serge was born on November 6, 1943, in Marcel, France. In 1961, he immigrated to the United States and in 1965, he joined the United States Marine Corps, serving for four years. In 1970, married his wife Marion and had two sons, Rafi, born in 1971, and Levon, born in 1972. The same year his son Levon was born, Serge earned a Bachelor of History from Cal State LA. Serge was a longtime resident of Montebello, having resided in the city for over 50 years. He dedicated much of his life to the advancement of the national aspirations of Armenian people. Serge's dedication to the cause was clear. He was a dedicated member of the Armenian Revolution, Revolutionary Federation since his youth. Serge also was the English editor for Azbarez, a publication that was based here in Los Angeles. In total, he spent 10 critical years with the publication. Apart from his time with Azbarez, Serge also served as Executive Director of the Armenian National Committee, Western US, in 1985. And as a part of a delegation, visited Geneva, he was successfully lobbying, he successfully lobbied for the United Nations to recognize the Armenian genocide. This was just one of the many accomplishments that Serge achieved in the pursuit of his cause that he dedicated his life to. He was an inspiring activist and he leaves behind an incredible legacy, permanent impact on his community, and was a personal friend. He's survived by his wife Marion and sons Rafi and Levon, and a host of family, friends, and members. We will miss him dearly. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Ridley Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair and colleagues. I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Stephen J. Rose, born August 26, 1946, and he passed on March 5, after a brief battle with leukemia. Steve was 71 years of age. He served as the mayor and as a city council member of Culver City, following his retirement from elected office. In 1987, he joined the city's Chamber of Commerce, from where he retired after a 30-year tenure as its president and CEO. He was influential in the revitalization of downtown Culver City, the success of Culver City businesses, and the evolution of the Chamber's newsletters from memegraph to an electronic format. And many of us remember memegraph. Mr. Rose is survived by extended family, friends, and Culver City colleagues, all of whom will miss him dearly. Stephen J. Rose. And then, Madam Chair and colleagues, I move that we adjourn in memory of Doris A. Davis. Born in Mount Vernon, Georgia, and passed away on the 19th of February in the city of Compton. She was the first African-American woman to serve as mayor of a metropolitan city in the United States. After graduating from Wendell Phillips High School, she went on to receive her bachelor's degree in education from Chicago's Teachers College, and earned her master's degree in educational administration from Northwestern University. It was in 1959 when she married and moved to California to work as a teacher for the Los Angeles Unified School District. It was in 1965 that Ms. Davis ran against the incumbent and was elected as the city of Compton's first African-American city clerk. She served until 1973, when she was elected as the first female African-American mayor. Ms. Davis was the founder of the Daisy Child Development Centers, a nonprofit organization that provided employment opportunities, housing, and childcare for unwed teenage mothers. She was a proud member of numerous civil rights and political engagement organizations such as the NAACP, the Urban League, and the Legal Women Voters. Ms. Davis is survived by her two sons, Shadrick and John, four grandchildren, Christina Jasmine, Terrence, and William, extended family, and friends, and a host of admirers who acknowledge her historic role in the empowerment of women in political leadership, all of whom will miss her dearly. Doris A. Davis. And Supervisor Hahn wishes to join in that. And finally, Madam Chair and colleagues, I move that we adjourn today in memory of Joseph Scott III. Born June 12, 1930, and he passed on February 14, at the age of 87. After graduating from the University of Notre Dame, he worked as a columnist for the Herald Examiner, the Los Angeles Times, and other California daily newspapers. Joe Scott was an editor and publisher for the newsletters, California IN, Political Animal, from 1973 to 2002. He ran many successful political campaigns in California and served from 2000 to 2011 as a communications director for the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office. During his tenure with the district attorney's office, he was, he supported the development of forensic science section, the Justice Systems Integrity Division, and the Public Integrity Division. He also developed an initiative to reach out to the ethnic media organizations. And he did tremendous work in working on seminars for their staff to help improve the communication systems internal and external to that particular office. Mr. Scott is survived by his son Stephen, his daughter-in-law Bee, his brother, Father Al Scott, three grandchildren, extended family, and friends who will miss him dearly. The inimitable Joe Scott. If you see a statue outside this facility just north of here, south of here, rather, it is not unrelated to Joe Scott. His family, his grandfather, and there's a lot of history embedded in his life. He was a Cub from the Lola High School and his history is well documented, a fascinating human being, and we will miss him dearly. And... And Supervisor Han wishes to join in memory of Joe Scott, as a tribute to the fact that he worked on her father's campaign. Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. Speaking of fascinating people, the third district would like to adjourn in memory of Jean Greenstein. He's a Holocaust survivor and a resistance fighter, who just died on February twenty-fourth. He was born in Czechoslovakia, and his whole family was interned in nineteen forty-four. But he escaped, he hid in a wine cellar, then he was captured, interned again, he escaped again. He joined the underground resistance. But the most interesting thing is that he then joined the Wehrmacht, pretending to be a German, high-ranking German SS officer. And posing as an SS officer, he saved hundreds and hundreds of Jewish lives by escorting prisoners to the Glass House, which was a former glass factory under the protection of the Swiss Embassy, where, when he was supposed to be taking them to a concentration camp, he dropped them off there instead, and they were given refuge, and each provided with passports for safe passage. He immigrated to New York in nineteen forty-nine, where he became a dentist, and then ultimately patented a number of innovative dental instruments. But at the end of his life, or near the end, he said that he, his greatest regret was that he had not been able to save more Jewish lives when, in his time posing as a German officer, a real hero. He's survived by his wife Ruth, his older sister Citi, and his three children, Paul, Lawrence, and Sharon. And I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Raven Blake Sercars, an artist and community and environmental activist, who died January twenty-ninth. She was a passionate advocate in the artistic and political communities in Topanga, engaged in local politics and environmental concerns, earning recognition as our Citizen of the Year in nineteen ninety-eight, long-serving board member of the Topanga Association for a Scenic Community. And in two thousand and one, she founded and directed the Topanga Creek Watershed Committee, and later, the Santa Monica Mountains Coalition for Alternatives to Toxins. Her video art is housed in the Getty Museum archive. She's survived by two sons, Andrew and Charles. And I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Maurice Stein, really a fabled Hollywood makeup artist, who died on February twenty-eighth. He worked on hundreds of TV shows and films, including Planet of the Apes and Golden Girls. And he crafted a makeup line to help cancer patients and burn survivors through makeup. For decades, he shared his corrective techniques to the National Look Good, Feel Better Program. He was the first makeup artist inducted to the California Cosmetology Association Hall of Fame, and included in the National Cosmetology Association Hall of Renown. And he served two terms as Makeup Artists and Hairstylists Guild Local 706 Vice President. He's survived by his wife of fifty-seven years, Barbara, and his three children, Michael, Danny, and Deborah. And I move that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Robert Arthur. He was the music supervisor for the Ed Sullivan Show, all the way from the nineteen fifties until nineteen seventy-one. He was the favorite music supervisor for Harry Belafonte, Elvis Presley, The Beatles, and The Rolling Stones. He also wrote a number of TV theme songs, and he helped Dick Clark launch the American Music Awards and the Country Music Awards. He's survived by his wife Jean, his son Adam, and his brother Peter. And finally, I ask that when we adjourn today, we adjourn in memory of Paul Demeo, screenwriter and producer, who produced for motion pictures, television, video games, and graphic novels, including very current shows, The Flash, The Sentinel, Viper, and The Rocketeer. Later in his life, he taught screenwriting at the USC School of Cinematic Arts. He's survived by his wife Lauren Glassman, his daughters Miranda and Annabella, and his brothers Pete and Michael, and his sister Sarah. Thank you. Supervisor Han.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we adjourn today in the memory of Nanette Fabre, an Emmy and Tony Award-winning actress, humanitarian, and a Palos Verdes Peninsula resident. She passed away at the age of ninety-seven. She was a well-known actress, appearing on sitcoms such as The Mary Tyler Moore Show, One Day at a Time, and Coach. Nanette also spent many years advocating for people like her who lived with hearing disabilities. She was a founding member of the National Captioning Institute of nineteen ninety-four, which was instrumental in passing a law requiring all TV sets be equipped with captioning. She's survived by her son and her grandchildren, and of course, her niece was Shelley Fabre. I also move, and I think Supervisor Kew would like to...
Yeah, I wanted to mention her work with Sid Caesar, too.
Yeah.
Because after he and Imogen Koko's show went off the air, everybody wondered, who's going to be the perfect partner to Sid Caesar, you know? And it turned out to be Nanette Fabre, an incredible talent. I'm glad she got to live so long.
I know. I also move that we adjourn today in the memory of Lana Calhoun, who was born in La Habra, and spent the last thirty-nine years living in the South Bay. She and her husband Sam were successful business owners and pillars of our community. Lana is most notably known as the co-founder of the emergency preparedness nonprofit Cop Preparedness. I worked with Lana many times with the neighborhood councils in the Harbor area. She had a lifelong passion for making sure that every neighborhood, almost street by street, became prepared in the event of an emergency. She's survived by her husband Sam, her three siblings, Philip, Alan, and Laura, her two children, Andrea and Carter, and her two grandchildren, Grayson and Claire. We will all miss Lana very much. I also move that when we adjourn, we adjourn in memory of Gary Osborne, who passed away at the age of sixty-nine. He grew up in Lomita. Gary became a member of ILW Local Thirteen in nineteen seventy-nine, and retired as a crane operator for the American President Lines. He's survived by his wife Dinell, his mother Lorena, his sister Cheryl, and his two brothers, Greg and Brad.
All motions to adjourn have been seconded, and without objection, will be adopted unanimously. Madam Executive Officer, please read us into closed session.
In accordance with Bren Act requirements, notice is hereby given that the Board of Supervisors will convene in closed session to discuss Item Number CS One, Department Head Performance Evaluation, and Item CS Three, Conference Regarding Potential Threats to Public Services or Facilities, as indicated on the posted and supplemental agendas.
Good meeting.